Alright, thank you everybody for making it out to the community center. Different venue, we'll change the location while we're still having some issues at town center. One of the items that we'll talk about tonight. Before I start the meeting, I ask you to silence your cell phones. This room already echoes enough, so we don't need anything added in our system. We also want to make sure that we are respectful of everybody's time and opportunity to speak to that. So if anybody is speaking, you know, go there or I'll speak while they're talking so we can hear everyone. Especially the echo in the room, I think that's going to be really important tonight. We have a long and a giant agenda to get through, this is a work session. So actionable items, full hearings will take place at the next meeting. This is mostly discussion items on the agenda tonight. But as always, if anyone would comment, we did put times on this agenda because it is so... A lot of things to talk about, we don't have to solve all the world's problems in one meeting. This meeting, even with the times as it is, has us here almost four hours. Which is a pretty long time, and we want to make sure we get to every item that we can. To be respectful for the things that are going on in town and things we need to get to. So if we get to an agenda item and we are discussing it, I allocate fifteen minutes for each agenda item. If we're kind of discussing it LA and it needs to be paused, that's okay. You can always come back around to it at the next meeting or at the next work session. And I just want to kind of say some ground rules because there's a lot of discussion on here. So we want to make sure everybody, every topic on the town was being presented and we'll go from there, okay? Alright, we got it. Oh, I didn't know that, okay? So if it's not live, then it'll be recorded and uploaded, that's right? So I am recording it, I'm crossing my fingers that it will save. Uploaded, if not, I will upload the minutes to YouTube. I mean, the recording, the audio recording to YouTube, okay? Sounds good, alright, let's do it, that's the camp what we got. Now, I work down in Northern Neck a lot, and I go to county meetings in Wake Forest and Moorestown and all these other towns. And this is a lot of technology going on in there, down to you, who we're working with. And sometimes we have people who are in White's area, I don't even think they're part of them. Alright, I'll start the meeting, it is already eight minutes past. So we're gonna stay upon agenda tonight. Call the order, 8pm, all vendors, all vendors are present. I don't have any amendments to the agenda. If there are no motions to amend the agenda, then I'll make a motion to approve the agenda at this second, okay? On the way there. Alright, next up is approval of the consent agenda. These include six sets of meeting minutes and two budget amendments, which are in our packet. Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
And would you please clarify the budget amendments on corporations that we already approved? The expenditures and previous names?
Correct, yes, all budget amendments are, well, I mean, I guess if you've been explaining that better. When it begins, the consent agenda is because it's already been, during the voted on, and it's just, I'm... I keep going from our last year budget to this year's budget, carrying forward.
That's correct, this is really just a housekeeping item. You guys approved the spending of the wastewater treatment plant settlement money over the SCADA. This is just amending the budget to reflect that on the vote.
And Heather, February first on here or not?
No.
Okay, so it's Friday, February one minute. Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda without February one minute?
So...
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
At least you mentioned the one, the SCADA system, but what about the beach? Is that all still, is that what we all agree on previously, or any changes to that?
It's the same, it's a housekeeping item, that was approved back in...
Where exactly?
Back in April.
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, I want to pay that.
Hi.
Alright, councilmember, the exact commission reports. I'll start, and what you're working on now, who's started initially?
So we have art walk and sit and stroll tomorrow night, and the hall going area, so make sure you stop by and enjoy that. And then we have our beach music festival on Saturday, and it's one of the most fun events in town. It's sponsored by the foundation, and come over by, you can get in at ten thirty, and it's not going until six. Any more public works, we're gonna be talking a lot about that tonight, so I'll leave those comments until we get to that in the session.
Yeah, for economic development, I know Kelly's been really busy and she sent me a list of songs. Kelly's been really busy, economic development lead, and so we're... I haven't had a chance to look over it since she sent, but it sounds like she's really busy, meeting with a lot of different organizations. Including government organization, economic development community, so next, next we now have a little bit more in depth on that. One thing I did want to mention is I asked for a couple of things to be put on the agenda tonight. So if anybody is interested in supporting a committee to, basically, for our public works, their infrastructure, I would appreciate that. It sounds like there's already been several that garnered letters to speak against it. So if anybody in the town thinks it's important that we have a committee to address our infrastructure needs, I would appreciate anybody speaking on that tonight. And also ask for water and sewer cap fees to be added to the agenda about what we need, so if anybody wants to speak on that, that would be great as well, thank you.
So there will not be a planning commission meeting this month due to lack of ability and have a quarrel. There will be no, nothing new since the last, last time that I reported it, where the zoning appeals forward and housing without authority. I would ask Mr. Woodley if he has anything that he would like to share, or Mr. Mack if he has anything he would like to share to step forward at this time.
Alright, so Parks and Rec, there was no meeting held yesterday. We're gonna be met in the next month, on first Tuesday. Just to reiterate, we have two openings available on the Parks and Rec division, so if anybody's interested in that, please sign up. We have Parks and Rec event for September, it'll be September twelve for Family Game Night. It'll be held here from six PM to eight PM, so if anybody wants to come out for Family Game Night, please sign up. Also, we have a tentative date for the townwide art sale, it's gonna be October the seventh. They'll be, will be held in town, the gist of this is, it'll be $5 fee, it'll be townwide available. We'll have a map that will, we'll have people register for that, and we'll make a map of days or less days each home that's gonna participate in that. And hopefully we can have a great outcome and bring other people here to town that may not normally come here.
I've got a couple of things, I'll say, everybody had Happy Labor Day weekend, and I thought we were gonna be turning out at the World of Parks and Recreation, that was fun. My dad, my mom's down there, it was really rough. And I am hosting a ninth grade student at my office for the art walk this Friday, Mr. Woodman, his name is Jaylin Wolf. And she has not yet taken our class, but she should come check out, so it's a great opportunity to see her. That's all I have. We don't have any presentations, so we'll move right forward to other topics. Alright, I have four via email and then a list of people signed up. Have they got their, um, their names to this meeting in order so that they know who they're after?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll be free at nine. Perfect, so we're gonna take the people in person first?
Yeah.
Okay. I have Michelle Collins Robinson, Mike from Long, and Michael from Tatters. Okay. Yeah, I want to say your name and address about one hundred and fifty-four minutes, and you have five minutes.
My name is Michelle Collins Robinson, I weigh like six hundred jacks each week. And I would like to say, I think of all of this room, we are safe as the least safe person in this community. And with that being said, I would like to think the chief of police were coming up to our street after he had such a, a major catastrophe with gunshots and bullet shells. But in order for me to get to the chief of police, I called someone that I voted for on the very first time since I lived on New York Beach, and that was Rick Wood. He came out, he spoke with me, asked him what was the problem, and then he spoke with my neighbor, who lives next door to where the problem really was. And from there, he worked out an action plan, and I hope all of you were on board with the action plan of having the chief have someone up the Dallas street. Who started the neighborhood watch in our community, they even did a speed test. And what that has done since July third, that we no longer have to worry about a whole park, apartment owner's house, or if they did drive across from Long. Or Heather, does that have to listen to music blasting, or we're about to place chase into one of our children's yards. So I would like to say, again, I know we have limited police force, but we need to use them where we need them. And again, our community is as safe, as the least safe area, thank you.
After Michael, we have Mr. DePac, Ms. Vaughn, and Mrs. Williams.
Madam Mayor, Councilor, four things, but I will give you quick. Hopefully what we passed in Richmond today is amended by our governor and will provide funding for our schools. And perhaps other grant opportunities that will be, will be able to take advantage of here in the town. So I look forward to hearing more about that when you all have a chance to evaluate what was done today. Going through the agenda, three sections, nine C is a tap fee, it's not the presentation. Quick suggestion, why not, I assume the commercial fee is the one that's the concern. Why not make that up to twenty thousand dollars for the availability fee? So that in, in the case of simple commercial investigations, a developer doesn't have to feel that they're on the hook for twenty thousand dollars if they know that there's going to be a tap fee, a tap available near where they are, so maybe it's up to, as opposed to making a flat fee. Secondly, on ten A, I of course, since I've spoken on this before, ten A, I'm sorry, is the exemptions from, for elderly and disabled members. Certainly I agree with using the HUD salary income levels as, as you agreed at the previous meeting. You will remember at your previous meeting that you decided to use thirty percent of the fees. Does the current six hundred dollars represent thirty percent of the average taxes being paid by our elderly and disabled? Or should you reconsider whether the six hundred dollars should be raised? I don't have the data, it's a question. And finally, on ten B, the short-term rental policy, and there are others who know much more about this than I do, so I only had one coming. I was a little confused about the paragraph about parking, because it's, it's, it says shall be off-site, shall be on-site. And then it says, you know, it's discouraged for the parking to be on the street. I think a lot of, a lot of us who are not involved in short-term rentals, and maybe don't have next-door neighbors even involved with them, would like to know that the parking for short-term rental properties was going to be on that property, as opposed to taking up other parking spaces on the streets or nearby areas. So I think you might want to, I think, second line, I think you might want to look at the wording of that, because I find it a little contradictory, starting with shall be and then going on to the end, thank you.
Good evening, Michael Fitzpatrick, Royal Line, Warwick Street, I have five items tonight I'd like to, and I'll be quick though. And the last one's gonna be fun, I promise. I, I know I'm a bit of a beating and death horse here, but on the food truck thing, it, it's really, has not, still isn't solved. We've now waited the entire twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three summer here and have not solved the problem. And I think getting it into private pianist as soon as possible is, is honest to goodness the solution. And not having town try, try to manage this themselves. We have rogue vendors coming into town, that, that's an issue right now, that they're not paying the fees, not paying their taxes. They drive right up to prime locations, steal the business from any vendors that we do have in town, and then drive away or get chased away. I know that the police chief has offered to give them fifty dollar tickets and whatnot, but it's very hard to enforce that because they're, they're on the move. I, I think that we could have done a better job of using town-owned property to solve the sort of shame of summer. We could have had some things down on that backdoor property on the boardwalk, and I, for the life of me, I don't understand why we didn't try to accommodate that. And I, I think we really need to try to enable private property conditional uses. That maybe the thing to do, so we don't have to put people through that whole process, is just change the darn ordinance and allow mobile food trucks to be one of the conditions that already exists. And not have to make people jump through these thousands of dollar hoops and all this time to get, to get it there. So I really hope that we can get our act together as a town here for twenty twenty-four season. Tap fees and what are access fees, I, I've said this before, but I think they're economic killers the way they are currently designed. And I think for small businesses, it's just completely unrealistic. Eighty-four thousand dollars or whatever ridiculous that is for those food trucks on Washington Avenue is absurd. And the gentleman before me, I agree with him, but I would take it one step further, I would cut those commercial fees in half, make them no more than the residential fees, and I would make them still optional for trying to recruit businesses in town. To leave it up to you all to weigh those, but make it an easy and understandable process for doing that. Labor Day Festival, Mayor mentioned this, it was phenomenal this year. I think our grants that we've been getting and the advertising we're doing come really, really paid off. That's, we had more vendors and more participants than we've had in over ten years down on the boardwalk this, this past weekend, so it was great. And I want to mention, it was in partnership with the foundation, with the chamber, and with the band, so we have three major NGOs in town working hand in glove together to make that such a huge success. And I think we can really kick up the art component next year way more. We finally got it back on track for fine arts and had a village down there where the fine arts, Montross Art Center participated, it was fantastic. And then I want to also say that I'm generally okay with the short-term rental program, that's part of the discussion tonight. Especially the comments that were put forward by the committee, as long as those recommendations are accepted, I'm generally good. But I think the tone down of some of the stuff that was like a month ago is, is better than it was. And I have one final thing, if you will indulge me, we work with the town in conjunction. You're paying fifty percent, in case you all don't know it, and the chamber's paying fifty percent to create a jingle for the town that can be used on radio stations here. And, and for, we have like this year, this music festival, we have the one on one point five, for two hours, we would be playing that jingle for all the ads and what's coming up for Bike Fest, all, all to our radio station, it'll be like Colonial Beaching. So if you, if you give me fifteen more seconds, I'll play you that.
You're not gonna sing it?
I'll sing it for you. It's all, it's the new request. I like to take hair, I was playing my hair next, sorry. Did you open it to the mic?
Is something the falls here?
Alright, sorry. No, that's a good, alright, let me think about that. Okay. So anyway, and we're gonna get fifteen versions of that, so. We're gonna get fifteen versions of that, like fifteen second, thirty second, minutes, and ones that just do the little Colonial Beach part and not the whole other part. So we'll start playing this on WWVR all the time, and then we'll be able to put our service announcements in that middle part there for all the upcoming things that we're doing, so very excited about it, sir.
After Ms. Vaughn, we have Ms. Williams and Mr. Griffey.
Hi, I'm Kelly Williams Vaughn, I live on Two Calumon Drive outside of the compliments, but I am a member of the chamber. I'm the eighth seat committee, all members committee, committee heart control, the holiday thing, and Women's Business Network, and we're reviewing. I just wanted to say that, that jingle kind of puts it in perspective. Like if we are gonna continue, you all have a responsibility to make it so that this town is affordable, that businesses can grow, and that we can meet the needs of the people that are living here. And right now, between the issue with short-term rentals, lack of housing, water tap fees, we are not business friendly, and that's a problem. And if we have businesses in town that need to grow, there are challenges there. Please, you've heard from all of us numerous times of the challenges, please, 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 look at what you have. Don't make snap decisions, touch constituents, your business owners, what we're saying. This isn't because we want to sit here, it's because we're telling you that we are not Fairfax County, we are not Southern California. We are a retirement community, we are a small business community, and we need to work together. People can't afford eighty thousand dollars to get their businesses hooked up, as Mike said, two years, that's bullshit, sorry. Please, please, think about what you're doing, and the impact that you have on the people that live here, work here, and hold here.
Ms. Williams, Mr. Griffey, and the teams.
Justice Paige Williams, fifteen to leave by early afternoon. I want to touch on a couple of things, the first thing is, I want to say that I support the infrastructure committee. We have the economic development committee, we have a parts and recreation committee, and I see no reason or why we wouldn't have that infrastructure committee. It's no secret that the residents of this town are upset about the infrastructure issues. Not just the, the water sewer treatment plant, the roads, the sidewalks, the list goes on and on. So I've asked if you would consider to not just dismiss an infrastructure committee. The second thing I want to touch on is the short-term rental ordinance. I think the planning commission did a wonderful job, and they took their time with it, which is important to take time with things. Although, it's not as easy, I always send someone out that's more than a can talk. However, one of the things a rich town would really look at and struggle harder is the parking of short-term rentals. I agree with Mr. Vaughn, what he said about how we feel the burden is for the parking issues. And I think parking is a big problem in Colonial Beach, so I don't think we need to make it any worse. The last thing I want to say is, I don't think we have an issue with the tap fees per se, but I do have an issue, issue with the availability fee, I think it's outrageous, I think it's ridiculous. That's all I have to say, thank you, good luck with services.
After Mr. Griffey, we have the teams, Mr. Whelan, and Mr. Vaughn?
Alan Griffey, one by seven, Shell Company, just outside of here. I work with home buyers and, I work with home buyers and home builders, and I'm gonna speak on their behalf. And with the help of those that are looking for workforce housing and affordable housing. The availability fee, which was kind of a surprise to me, five thousand dollars for residential and twenty thousand dollars for commercial, when for decades it's been twenty-five dollar a fee. I think as a municipality, we should know where our modern service services are, and it should be a very simple issue to tell the would-be customer that we have to serve them better. It's like, I go out and advertise for you to come to town and just pay an economic development, but then I ask you for a big check to answer a question, as to whether I could buy water sewer to build a building up. I don't know anywhere else that knows that. We need to walk the economic development, not push it by. Also like to speak in favor of the global vending issues, and I've heard from a number of would-be vendors, it's been very, very difficult to operate in town. We do have presently an application in for, not quite complete, but we're getting there, and we'd like to support that.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Steve Smurkeen, owner of Dogma's Home and Wild, this is my wife Tina, also the owner of Dogma's Home and Wild. This is sort of a bittersweet moment for us, bigger than the fact that unfortunately we had to take our hot dog park out of California Beach. we had to take our hot dog cart out of the town of Colonial Beach. And the reason for that is, we were told that we had to pay after the fact a site survey for our hot dog cart to be on property that we lease for another business, as well as a fee of eight hundred dollars just for the application. So that made it physically, unbelievably absurd for us to try to run that business in Colonial Beach. So we had to make the hard decision to move the hot dog business out of Colonial Beach for the second time. It breaks our hearts, because our hearts are in Colonial Beach. We love the beach. I'm on the Chamber of Commerce in Colonial Beach. We have cases of the visitors' guys that are on their business in Colonial Beach. It breaks my heart to have to say this to the town, but it's the fact. So with that said, I would ask that the town council look at, and the town management, look at the application process for the cup process, and just look at the reality of this. When we have events, if I want to take the hot dog cart or the trailer to another business in town, whatever business it is, I would pay that application fee, be able to serve out of my window at our hot dog trailer. But because of the application process, if I were granted that temporary use process, I would have to cook the food in the trailer and take the orders outside of the trailer and deliver it outside of the trailer. I tried that for a weekend, and I almost died because it was over a hundred degrees out inside the trailer while I was cooking, and I had to serve the food outside of the trailer. The customers were confused. Why are you taking your orders out here? It doesn't make sense. But yet, we had a great late night weekend on the beach where other food vendors were out there, and God bless them all. They did a great job. But they were able to serve food out of their trailers with no stipulations, because they own public property. So in theory, if I were out on Washington Avenue in front of our other business, or another business nonetheless, and I paid that application fee, I could serve food out of our hot dog trailer, but yet because I'm on private property, I can't do that. That will never make sense to me. It truly doesn't make sense. I hated to have to pull our hot dog trailer out of Colonial Beach. I took a lot of heat from the citizens. Why'd you move? And conversely, the town that we pulled the trailer out of, called me the mayor of the town, called me, said, Steve, thank you so much for bringing it back. What else can we do? That breaks my heart. I have two businesses separated by fifteen miles or ten miles, or however it is, and it doesn't make sense to have to do that. It really doesn't. And yet, we have, I took pictures of which Michael Waylon through Jay Nice, did Nice Mania, and my folks have spent hours trying to get these rogue food vendors to be compliant. I want to pay the Neil's and Lodge's taxes for both of our businesses. We really do. We do. And we do. But these rogue vendors are sitting right outside of both our businesses at the time, and now on both of our businesses, selling lawyers that they're not even licensed to do so, and they leave us as doing that. Please, look at the program. Fix it. And nobody, and I'm sorry, but this is a fact, when we went to get our business license, I wish somebody at Town Hall would've said, hey, Steve Smur, you need to do this, you need to do that. But instead, I'm like, well, you're good to go. Everything's good. So I pulled the trailer out here, the hot dog trailer, and everything was fine. My wife puts something on social media thanking and saying, oh, my God, we're home in Colonial Beach, we can't wait to do business here. And two weeks later, we pulled it out. Well, let me just add, first of all, we come to each and every one of you as a friend. First of all, we come to each and every one of you as a friend this evening because we love Colonial Beach, and we're proud to be here, and we're proud to serve the citizens of Colonial Beach. Both my husband and I have worked for the public, and the Republicans have paid our bills since we were teenagers. So we know what it takes to draw the public into this town. And I want to say, Michael Fitzpatrick, that jingle is genius. It's genius. There's no other way to start. What I'm coming to as a friend right now, being that I've had a business for years, and I'm in business right now, and I serve the public. If you don't have things for the public when they get here, because not everybody can afford established restaurants when they bring their children, okay? Not everybody can quit that. You stop doing that. When the visitors leave and the businesses leave, they're not coming back. Remember that. They're not coming back. So thank you. Absolutely. So I want to thank you for the food vendors up here for your, okay. But in closing, I want to thank Michael Fitzpatrick again, because I was at the meeting where he brought the jingle process to the chamber. That's what goes on behind the scenes, and that's what we need. We need to promote Colonial Beach. You know, not just me, it's Kelly Woods Vaughn, it's Michael Waylon, it's all the small vendors that come into town. We're not here just to make money, we're here to promote the town. We really are. We're here to, I don't have to go to the chamber and get cases of visitors' guys carrying to my other business, but I do, because I love this town. I love it. And again, for another mayor to call me and thank me and welcome me home to Montross, to see what the town of Lawrence all doing, we need to learn from that and change some of these regulations to make it more business friendly. In closing, I will say, go up to the shopping center, Colonial Avenue, and look at all the businesses that are empty up there. We need to fix that. We need to make it more business friendly for the small business owner. Thank you.
I just want to start by thanking the council for lending in here and allowing the po, oh, apologies, I didn't do that. My name is Michael Waylon. I reside on Three Twenty-first Street, and I've been a resident here for two years, coming to Colonial Beach when I was twelve. I have a couple of businesses. I employed five young women last year and four this year, which I'm very proud of. Each of those skills, and encouraged them to go to Monroe. And basically, the reason I'm here is to seek my support for the Washington Avenue Food Corp, called my colleagues, the Mobile Vendor Corp. I think it's a much-needed vehicle that's in tandem with the town vision, promoting this town and encouraging our visitors and them having a good experience. I'd like to request that the town be less restrictive for these rules and regulations to comply, to even get a cup to deal, to be considered for a mobile vendor court, and the associated costs to operate such a court. Again, grateful to the members who have mentored here, there's several of you, I'm very grateful for your time, that you've listened, and I think there's a heart there that wants to hear that small business pulse, so I'm encouraged by that. In a nutshell, I love the bio from one of our leaders up there at the table right now. Together, we have the potential to make the ground, the town thrive. Amen. Together, we have the potential. So I came to Colonial Beach years ago, and I saw an evolution of this town. I have, my daughters-in-laws live in Point for about fourteen years, and they had quite instrumental in me leaving Hawaii to come to Colonial Beach. I wanted to bring the law spirit with me. I wanted to impact every single person that I interacted with and do with, to pass that on, that they too become ambassadors of law, of goodwill towards the people that come here. And I recently invested in several hundreds of thousands of dollars to relocate here, and with the intention of opening a second business. I held out on opening that second business. I had a second thought to why I was in the environment here. It's a little bit more challenging than I first thought when I came ten, twelve years ago. And though I've put a lot of time and effort into it, it's just a whole side way that's in the town's interest to encourage those people are willing to roll up their sleeves and apply themselves by supporting that straightforward notion of promoting Colonial Beach. That's the main thing we've everybody's come up here today. Here's some bullet points. Mobile truck vendors are hardworking people. They are. They work their tails off, they'll get the hit for hours. They're ambassadors of goodwill, by greeting the visitors, providing directions and insightful information to make the visitors stay here most comfortable. And by offering reasonably priced food and beverages, they're providing us these services to families, you know, by offering those services without them having to leave the beach or go in their cars and drive all over town. But we need the support of the town, because we're truly in this altogether. So requests, one, I'm requesting the town has ordinance to stop rogue vendors who are coming into Colonial Beach and selling food trucks wherever and whenever they please. Both of them are not part of the vendor program, not in food trucks, and it's closed. Also, the ambiguity about who can post signs around town and who cannot. New signs have popped up all over town, and I was requested to have my signs removed from the area where I'm operating from. It's kind of a little ambiguity going on. The main request is to let the food truck vendors govern themselves. They know how to comply with the health department, they know the town rules and regulations, and they are competent business owners. In closing, we're really on the same conid, but the main thing is, you know, we're all battling together with the intention to support that town model that wants to make Colonial Beach a place to thrive. I thank you all again for the time, for the talk.
We move on to the email comments. I have one from this Chrissy Moplin. It says, Madam Mayor, council members, I noticed that tonight's agenda includes a discussion on the formation of committees. While a committee system might make sense in a large city, I cannot see any value such a system can bring to the town of Colonial Beach. I see committees as a hindrance to a small town such as ours. It will slow down processes and place undue burden on the employees who observe as committee members and the support that necessary to run committee meetings, distracting them from their day-to-day tasks and keep the town down. Council members already serve as liaisons of the town departments and report on the businesses of those departments monthly to the benefit of the whole council and the public. In addition, there can be an ugly side to committees whereby individuals attempt to use them to advance their own agendas and create actions, which cause division and chaos in our small town, which is smaller than many housing developments down in large cities. Committees have the potential to cause more harm than good. And look that this agenda item will not go beyond tonight's discussion, and you will not favor a committee system of governing now or in future. Thank you. Next is from Mr. Armstrong. In response to the notion that an infrastructure committee should be created at this structure for the town of Colonial Beach, I have consulted with AWC senior engineers and come up with my own determinations that I believe will be of benefit for the town from a GIS perspective as well. A committee would not have enough data in order to properly evaluate anything at this point. GIS resources for infrastructure are currently being developed and are necessary for proper evaluation. Pending D dot information, pending GIS resource tools, like our GIS enterprise server, staff resources, top of support committee will delay and hinder efforts to gather the required information and generate plans. Staff need to generate required field data. At this stage, I think a committee would only serve to hinder infrastructure plans and confuse the public while the proper studies get conducted and there are professional recommendations made that can be looked at holistically. Give it that one. Next one is from Rob Ruddick. Members, it is time to establish or reestablish a public works committee. This would allow the town to monitor public work issues more closely, possibly avoiding future problems with issues such as sewage spill. Thank you. And lastly, for Mr. Kelly, he says, I have reviewed the agenda and supplemented information for tonight's meeting and offer the following comments. I agree with the need to focus on issues, bring Diane Bayer's support report on the state of the beach report. I add, inherited order to focus on the North Beach, which has the most serious erosion. With rising sea levels and other environmental issues, I insist on engineering studies to confirm that the current approach and jetty approach is most effective. For example, years ago, the American Legion had a perpendicular jetty at their property. Over the years, this jetty has added as much as a hundred feet of beach to the south of their jetty. Sewer and water connection and availability fees continue to be outrageously high to swamp commercial business and a significant deterrent to economic development. No flexibility in committing to reduce these fees despite assurances to the contrary to the past. For example, the fees for providing water and sewer to two small blocks on Washington Avenue was eighty-two thousand bucks a week. That's just too much money for a co-bid and sewer connection that already exists. I understand that a business has demolished the house and new planned in First Street to build a smaller restaurant. We all know their water and sewer at that location, but the town will want to charge them forty-one thousand two hundred anyway. That's the deal. The council must provide nameful guidelines to staff to enable them to scale back access so they are not a killer of economic growth. I know the town needs funds for water and sewer operations, but the current system is so bad, the town would get nothing. The short-term rental ordinance is an excellent example of government overreach. The legislative goal was to get a handle on how many short-term rental operations we have in town. The ordinance expanded that charge, and now it looks like our Northern Virginia was unmuted over regulations. I see an item on the agenda called formation of committees. What is this for? We need more committees than we need a whole lot of it. This is just another way to delay important town work. We need to hire competent professionals who want to do their jobs. We don't need committees with low-intentioned people on us. The growth of town is paced with people with good intentions. They're very conservative. Just that was all. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move forward with unfinished business. I had a lot of, about fifteen minutes before we stopped, we now have a little bit of a tangent each topic. So, and I'm looking at you, the average I know here, oh, no, my top, sorry. Okay. I appreciate everybody coming today. I think there's people I love. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. So we were tasked with providing answers to a series of questions. The answers have been provided and uploaded onto the town website at a link that states it's the myth versus fact or fiction link, so all of those answers are provided there. And I just have just a brief executive summary of what was requested, and then I will open it up for a sound review discussion. So in response to the sewage spill that occurred over the time period of July third and fourth, the town has started to implement additional redundancies to reduce the likelihood of a spill, which includes working with council towards replacement and upgrading a current system. If you all remember, council approved expenditures for the purchase of a new state of system. And the town continues to bring forth to council potential improvement investments, and we are working diligently to improve the processes and the communication protocols to assess any follow-up actions from this incident. The town, of course, recognizes the severity of the spill and the community reaction and concern toward it. So with that, I open up to council members for any discussion that possibly had on those responses.
When we first got notification of the spill, a couple of days passed, I had been in consultation with some other council members, and I put together this list of fifteen questions to see specifically what happened and what. From these pages, there's two big paper legs out. I picked one. It took entirely too long for the council to be notified that the spill occurred. Secondly, the vast majority, or the biggest reason for the spill, I'm gonna ask the buyers to... I'm gonna ask Ms. Byer to share with us to make sure my assumption is correct. SCADA, which is acronym of System Control Automatic Data Acquisition, is basically the automatic pilot for the sewer system. It went down over July 3rd weekend. We didn't find out about the spill until somebody came in for work. SCAD system, we've already burdened this council to replace that system. Additionally, there are redundancies that should be put in place so that if our automatic control system goes down, we've got somebody else in the co-coach to tell us those things occur. Here is what... Here were my impressions when I found out about it, because I paddle in the river. The river is why I hate Plummer Beach. We were fortunate in that where the spill happened, and this is pure happenstance, we just got lucky. It went into a marsh area, so none of this stuff got into the river. However, if I had a grandchild swimming in that river, I would want to know about it. We spoke with the acting town manager at this point, because our town manager was on the directing meeting. And we put together a system by which, and I'm gonna ask you if you will to let me know if this topic is correct in expressing this. As soon as there is a critical incident report, that's a definition. It basically meaning when Brad Bass, okay, for lack of a better term, that she will notify us if I phone immediately, and we will put it on that emergency system that y'all get anytime we have bad weather or what have you. It's my understanding of that, correct Ms. Byer?
Yes, I would just like to add, what law also indicated that after he was in three hours of leaving no sign incident.
Thank you. So the important thing at this point, when I first found out about it, what I was mad about, of course, I was mad about the spill. But mistakes happen, control mistakes happen. The human error part of it is what made me mad, is that they made most of people mad. Okay, so we have to have trust as Plummer Beachers that we have each other's back. We put together a system in place so that's going to happen. Now through just the responsibility and taking care of what broke it, it's a pretty good size of expenditure. But in all fairness, when Ms. Byer first came aboard, she identified the SCADA system as a problem. If there is a failing, it's on us by being able to identify which capital improvement project should have gone first. Unfortunately, none of us are citing, okay, so we get wrong. But we are taking steps to correct the situation because I want to be able, when I walk down the street, to look each and every one in the eye and let you know that I am doing the best that I can. The rest of the council members are doing the best they can to protect you. And we've learned from our mistake, and it won't happen again.
I have a home, I have it one day. You have to check it out on the town website, on the mid versus fact section. But it's also just searchable. The search bar on the town website is phenomenal. It's so much better than it used to be. So you can just search it, and it will pop right up for you. And it has also the data from TQ about all those sewer spills, classifying, you know, by incident type. And it's, you know, anyway, I just really think the town would be into, well, coming in here fairly well, getting in and back. And just putting them right on, right on the website. I would, and I come to, I start around this already, and I think probably some other counselors up here would probably ask the same thing, that I would like to see the swim guy test it all later on that website too. There's a guy did the testing that is done by, what's it, River Keepers?
River Keepers.
Once a week now, her River Keepers, they're, you know, want to just say that that testing is that exact location at that exact moment. So obviously, you have to take that for yourself, the water test. You can only test a location at that exact moment, give you that data at that moment. So it's really, really good work actually with they add whatever time you test. But I think it just gives them a little more information to people, and we provide some information already. So there are many new testing, and the website is very easy to use. I don't think it'll be a bit real, and I just like it for me. I'm gonna go this way and then...
Okay, regarding the River Keepers, I've talked with several members of that group. They are expanding and trying to add additional locations. But I saw one this morning, and she said, you know, she was so excited because they've been testing three locations every week, all summer long, and they've only had one failed test. And they tracked that back to a vessel that had illegally opened its sewage tanks and dumped them there. So I said a lot because all my life I've heard that there have been major issues in Monroe Bay and Monroe Creek, and those tests are not failing. So I think that's really good news. The other point I wanted to make was that, I don't wanna lie, but up until the action that Mr. Willis started after the sewage spill, we, we as a council had never directed our town manager, our town staff, on what we expected of them at an emergency. There were no policies or protocols. So now those are being put into place so that our expectations, which reflect our constituency's expectations, the staff that's responsible for that communication knows what they want. So I feel that my fellow council members and also the staff are helping get that process started, and their understanding is continuing with the even more comprehensive communication plan. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Wow, can I say something?
Uh, we're speaking on the conference line, but you could have signed up with all the comments.
Well, I mean, we're talking about this conversation then.
Okay, but we can speak online if I have to. We also have a really cool agenda still.
We only have two minutes.
It's already been an interruption to the meeting, but in terms of...
Just real briefly, first of all, I wanted to thank the folks who had issues with the vendor courts. That's the kind of communication that we need with council. What this proved to me today is that we want to solve problems. We are not perfect. We are an amateur garbage box. We learn as best we can as fast as we can. The way that we learn quickly is by taking well-intentioned input. And I promise you, we all heard the message. We are listening from this point. So I wanted to thank you folks for being respectful of the briefing session. We had to talk about this before. But that is exactly the way to affect change, and I wanted to thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
Just real quick, I spoke at length about the sewage spill, you know, for our meetings. I just wanted to reiterate that it was not acceptable. Two years ago, I got off as a citizen and spoke about it, and it wasn't acceptable. Two months ago, and then it happens. And this is one of the things that I've been talking about more when I talk about public works slash destruction committees. These things can be addressed in public, and we can discuss those. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but thank you.
All right, I think we are discussing it in public right now. Is there anything I want to bring on the other question to follow up? All right, the next item, personal property license fee reminder, Mr. Shaitner.
This is really just a reminder to remind everybody that your license fees, which used to be vehicle decal fees, will now be under the Personal Property Bill, which will be mailed out November 5th due to sound fit. Council's decided to go to vehicle license fees and go away from young decals to basically save stat time, save the cost of personal decals, and save residents from having to put key cals on, take key cals off. Which is...
Basically coming to town home?
Yes. So this is just a reminder to let everybody know to look out for those charges that will be on their bill. That's... Do you have any questions? Happy to take any questions.
We got it, man.
Got it, man. Okay.
I put this up in the agenda because I knew this cycle was gonna come up, and people didn't pay for stickers six months ago, and everybody's gonna forget it. They didn't pay for stickers six months ago, then they're gonna be, what if the fee didn't change? It's a safety, it just moved from six months ago to being billed on the actual bill.
Yes.
Instead of having its own old bill back.
And just to clarify that, you know, if you have a vehicle that's registered and you're watching your town, and you pay, it's registered, and so you pay its fee, then your license plate is in the system, and you will not be ticketed because you have the privilege of parking at no charge in the paid parking places as a town resident. If you get a new vehicle, you gotta take that and register it again and make sure at Town Hall that the new license plate number and vehicle description are in those records so that you don't get a ticket.
You do. You have to come in, you have to pay the same fee, which is $30. Because essentially, that vehicle wouldn't be under Personal Property Bill. Because it's only built for a year. So if you get a new vehicle, or your license plate, the item's still coming to town home.
Yeah, because any of me and so are those people. Those are people I know that have gotten ticketed before, are people that got new vehicles and did not go into registering the vehicle.
That is correct.
Or to be straightforward.
Yes.
And next month, we will be, uh, we'll be doing PPTRA.
Yes, I just got to file upon the county last week.
I know, I got my bill.
I can't start my work until we're done, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So I'll be working on the Personal Property Bills next week, next, well, this coming month. And I'll have a PPTRA rate to you all, probably the first we may not go.
PPTRA rate is a discount rate for, uh, personal property, but it's a tax rate.
Yes.
I forget what that is.
Personal property tax rate.
Just curious, are we expecting the bills to go up this year? Last year, we added to the Personal Property Tax Rate. But I'm not sure if the vehicle values went down, so there'll be some sort of leveling, or are people gonna expect more in those?
I have looked very briefly. I have not gotten to it. I've been doing modeling, which had further coverage fee on it. So I'm doing other things. I want to give, I want to make an answer to that. Roughly, I believe it did go down. I'm not gonna, I'm nowhere near gonna say how much, because I haven't gotten into it yet, but I believe it did go down. Thank you.
So does the county reassess personal property on an annual basis, even though so...
Uh, you know, that's not true. Yes, they do reassessments on an annual basis.
Unlike rules say, which is only reassessed every five years, right? So if they did reassess, and the value on a personal property would be up, then we would see it reflected on the spill.
You would.
That's all about the rate cutting that could happen next month.
Right. But really, the assessment of the vehicle has really got a lot to do with current loan value. Westmore County had a whole algorithm that used to make up what the actual assessment of the vehicle was. We don't have to worry about that, because that's a prior tax rate to that. And then we get a set up now from the state for the Personal Property Tax Rate every year. And then you guys decide to hold my vision more of like you did last year.
Let's see what happens last year. I mean, we can talk about the PPTRA next month when we get there. I don't know, we have a lot of things to do with that, you know?
Okay. I have been asked to speak again about availability fee, and I just wanted to clarify the difference between availability fee and the tax fees. The availability fee is a fee payable for the purpose of having the town's utility service available to the specific unit, whether it be residential or commercial, and is intended to defray in part capital costs of natural water and sewer supply, collection, disposal, treatment, transmission, and storage facilities, to include expansion, maintenance, and additional staffing. The availability fee shall be borne entirely by the applicant, and it does not include connection on town houses. The tax or connection fee is the cost incurred in making any physical connection to the town's utility system, and includes the meter, meter installation and labor. The connection costs shall be borne on so far the applicant. Just a reminder that the water sewer tax and availability fees do not affect current residential businesses. They only affect new construction. There was a comment made about a demo here recently that demo would not need to pay for an availability fee because there is an account currently on that demo. Why can't availability fees be combined with tax fees? I have just two points to make here. The availability fees are often done and no timely intention exists to develop the lot or land and/or connect to town facilities or utilities. The same work needs to be done to assure proper availability on site and to assure the town systems to handle the request based on the project. The second point is that commercial project, a commercial project may need for one availability fee and for multiple tax or connection fees. That's common. One thing I would like to bring up regarding the availability fee and its need. We just had a sewer collapse, and it looked probably terrified by Chamberlain and Marshall right up the street here. We have a silent pump there and a row of bypasses built. And we are right now having to bypass from another landfill and pump that area every day manually with our staff. Because we do not have the equipment, it's too deep for our staff to be able to address this particular break, this particular collapse. So we're gonna have to bring in a contractor to fix this issue that has been deferred for many, many years. So if we have an availability fee and we start building this fund that can be used to address these sorts of issues, we will be able to do that. Whether or not it affected this area, straight up the road from this front, from this collapse, are the new accounts. So with that, I open it up to questions.
Okay, well, the biggest reason why this was on the agenda tonight is because there were some questions coming from contractors and other people about what are they aiming for with the availability fee. And I feel like I've tried to synthesize that and understand that and take that back, but to make sure that that is, that I'm understanding it correctly, that part of this availability fee is creating a fund that helps support the GIS efforts and the infrastructure knowledge base that we need in order to make connections possible. That when somebody's gonna add, uh, and each new connection somewhat burdens into the system. When there's an additional connection to the system that we don't understand half the data, the GIS, the flow data, and all the other infrastructure information... the G I S and flow data and all the other infrastructure information, then assessing that new connection could be burdening the system without understanding the impact. So creating a fund that helps us pay for gathering that data is a part of this process. That, my, we're both in that. I mean, that's part of what I was understanding on this.
I would say that was a part of it. I would say it's a small part of it.
Okay.
I would say there is a good deal right now, which would be alleviated if we had a G I S support. But right now, it's a great deal of work to go out and assess what condition the pipes are in around certain requests, how deep they're in, what direction are they flowing in, what else is hooked to that pipe? Can that pipe support whatever this project is that's, that's requesting the availability, all of those sorts of things. It's also a mechanism to allow the new development to pay, kind of pay into the system that the citizens of Colonial Beach are already utilizing. And the citizens of Colonial Beach should have to pay for the, for the burdens of new development in the system. This is a way to build that fund so that we cannot raise, you know, we don't have to raise taxes. We don't have to affect the folks that are already on the system and have already been here coming along. So there are quite a few things that we would hope to do, but there's quite a few things that come into this and don't do anything.
Tom, you look like you have a... William's was up at the station. I don't recall exactly, but I did express some concern that adding an opening fee, and I was assured at that time that there are workarounds to not simply, well, whatever they are, I don't know if they're worth it. But we heard this evening from a lot of folks who have a lot of problems opening up businesses in this town. And, and opening the fee is certainly one of the best ways that you can destroy business. Would it be possible if we look at this entire area of listed to wind up whatever availability fees we have with a certain percentage of the construction cost? So that way, if you're looking, actually opening up a business, you've got a predictable cost regardless of what it is.
I definitely have a bad opinion on that. Once I've seen this, I've seen that play out locally. I played that with that like a little bit on that. That I've seen somebody come in and put in a low infrastructure development to get lower fees and then take it down and put them in there. I've seen it happen in order to pay these costs like that. So I think that's a little bit tricky, but I, I understand the concept. I do think there's a workaround. If I, I'm trying to hear from the public in all this concern. And, uh, in that, I heard, I heard two very, I heard a lot of things that I'm going to admit, but, uh, it seemed to be a lot of comment around specifically two, um, locations for new business. One of them doesn't have anything to do with the tax fee. One of them is about a zoning issue. Uh, it has nothing to do with the tax fee because they're an existing location with an existing town. And in fact, we're right now doing enormous amount of work to that location's infrastructure because of Karen, I'm trying to figure out her hot mess. The other one is a similar zoning issue, but has to do with the tax fee. And when we had spoke about there being the economic incentive program for the tax fees or for other fees, you know, I think there is a very clear sincerity about that, but we never had an application. I asked multiple times over the months if we had an actual application. And we didn't have one. So we couldn't bring it to council to discuss using the code to wait for fee if we never had an application. We can have a lot of calls. We can have a lot of, yes, we want to do this, or yes, we want to do that. But they're not like an actual application. We don't have an applicant to discuss an application like that. So now that maybe an application, which is revealed in public comment, when, you know, those things get kind of slammed with the council, which is your office of the council, and we have to put this on an agenda now, we have to have, you know, staff talkers. So I think there, and I, there are a lot of people that talk about specifically Washington Avenue and the whole, there's some here in the audience. Some people have unfortunately left about that. Uh, but there is a problem for this, but if we don't have an application, then we can't, we can't engage in that until there's an actual application. So, uh, that is just one piece of it. But I do think there are workarounds to Tom's point. Uh, incentives, discounts, and incentives. Uh, and the other point that was made was about, um, we have a lot of roadside infrastructure and vacant storefronts. Uh, any vacant storefront already has a tax and does not have to pay this attention. It is one of the most key parts of development community to protect us from new development, to protect this town from being run over. We're putting in things that didn't exist when prior things were coming in. And that is, and then it's created issues. It's created concerns. It's created problems. And so, um, there is a way of saying, let's bring everybody here and let's all come. And I love the jungle and like, I love London Beach. Love it. But also, um, there is, we need to protect what's written about with town. And just allowing and opening up like a valve is not safe for us. And so we need the vacant storefronts to be incentivized. And there's nobody incentive in saying, you're going to fill on undeveloped property. There's a major burden to us, you know. But if you want to fill something that's daring, something that's negligent, something that is, that is, that's, you know, uh, ugly or rundown or creating crime or creating issues, you know, public safety issues, then we're going to incentivize that. If you're going to have a connection, you're going to have a big connection. So there's a huge incentive now to go into places like the vacant Reagan Shopping Center, to go into places like the meat deli shop that burst down on Colonial Avenue. To go and restore our confidence along Washington and Florida that never went there before. Um, and, you know, fix up the things that we have in town that are going to get worse if we incentivize developing undeveloped land instead of incentivizing focusing on this, on the problems that are existing. So this, that is a really key piece of the infrastructure fees, the cost of this. And that if we want to fill every single vacant lot in town, it could happen. But there's a lot of repercussions to that too. And there's a balance to this and it's, it's important to see both sides of this, not just open the door. So anyway, sorry about that. Go ahead.
So, um, so I sent the email, several council members as well as Inspire in discussion of the tax fees. Um, in discussion of that, understanding what the availability fees do and understanding what they're for. There's a lot of analysis I go into any of those developments, whether it be commercial or residential. What I thought proposed was is, you know, sort of a discount rate. So if you go along with the actual tax fee for large sewer, then we could apply some type of percentage, whether it be ten, twenty, thirty, whatever the percentage is, and you discount it to tax fee. So, uh, I'll use my example that I used, uh, let's say forty percent, right? So currently right now, our residential is five thousand for the availability fee and eighty-five hundred for the connections close around about. I think it was, I think it ended up being like thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Okay. So if you slashed it to forty percent, give a discount to that, because if you are actually putting in the sewer, actually putting in the water, then the dollar cost would be eleven thousand, five hundred dollars if you had a two thousand dollar discount. Same thing would go for the commercial if you use forty percent. Um, I think it's what? Thirty-eight thousand dollars total for the commercial. And then if you got a forty percent discount, it ended up being like twenty-nine thousand with an eight thousand dollar discount. Don't quote me in any of those numbers. But the point is, yes, availability fee is important, right? Because there's a lot of manpower to run both of that. But if someone goes through with the process, does the tax and does the water tax fee, let's give them a discount and say, congratulations, we are now going to give you X amount of dollars for going through with the process, not just saying, Public Works, if you go check this out, you know, waste a hundred, two hundred, three hundred man hours and they go, oh, never mind. You know, we're sorry, we're not going to do this now. And you wasted all that time on it there. So that was kind of my thought process. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that, but for the additional stuff.
All right, I know what Tom's going to say.
Okay. Yeah, just a couple of things.
I'm trying to find.
I'm going to, I'm going to call on, I'm going to talk.
Yeah, actually, I'm the one that kind of initiated this because I've heard from a lot of constituents and a lot of people upset. And of course, being on economic development days, I'm, I've heard a lot in their committee meetings about this and some of the issues that it's causing. Um, and the example that was given earlier was the eighty-two thousand, five hundred to basically put in food truck court because it's on two separate lots and currently has, I believe, has residential and they need to have commercial and all that. Um, and so Tom, when I brought this up and I mentioned it earlier, uh, when we were first discussing this, we were concerned about businesses and hampering business. And this is a, the food truck court is a perfect example. And I can, I can imagine there would be others coming in the future. Uh, we were assured by the mayor and even the town manager at the time that we had tools in place that we could work with these potential business owners when they wanted to start up in town. But I, to this day, don't really know what the process is. It hasn't really been clearly explained to us. Um, I don't know why it would be so complicated if a small business wants to come in. Why are we charging forty thousand dollars to tap into water? I get it, you know, you're talking big business versus a small business. So that could be like a coffee shop, for example. Why is a coffee shop forty thousand dollars to tap in the same as like, you know, a major project like the dots on the boardwalk? You know, they're two different things. So I think a lot of people have concerns about. I think we should either have a separate fee or we should make it very clear and clear to anybody who applies that, okay, you're a small business and we're going to, we're going to waive this much of the fee. But to me, it's just you're picking winners and losers and I don't really like that. I think everybody should be treated the same, no matter what your business is and you come into town. You should be treated, you know, just like the other guy, just because you make no, the mayor or Kenny or, or somebody doesn't mean that they should get, that's not to treat.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that's happening. And I, I was saying that it has been very clear that that economic incentive is there. It has been said, do Mr. Murray, do you all, do the Economic Development Committee, do town staff, it is there, engage us. You go to the, you go to the town manager for this. But if we don't have an application, there is nobody to negotiate with. And I'm just saying, this is, this is because this is specific to that property, but nobody has said no to that. Nobody. And so it has not been brought to town yet. So there is a process for this and getting ahead of it is to say that there is not, I see your hand up.
Well, you mentioned my name twice now.
I think.
I think that's a good response. Probably all the time was coming before there's an airway or makes it pretty difficult. It's back. I should be allowed to speak since you mentioned my name. There hasn't been an application.
I will call, I will call you up here because this has been specifically focused around Washington Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can you, can you, Tom, as far as?
Oh, we're waiting for a panel discussion.
Yeah. Not discussing. Sure. If you want to be able to come to a comment before, so that, so that it's an understanding.
All right.
So the other thing that I wanted to mention, the business thing, the realtors, I was hoping we could actually hear from some realtors tonight. Um, part of the concern that they have behind this is that they want to list the lot for sale. Uh, in order to even sell the lot, they have to have water availability. So somebody's got to go out and pay that five grand write-off. So that's just one concern I heard. And also people have asked, and so I, I'd like to ask the, either the town manager or the Public Works Director. Um, there's like eight or nine condos on the top of the dots in development. Can they pay individual tax fees to be there? And will they have individual paths for each one of those condos? Since this has been a public discussion.
So those condos, uh, so those condos, the M O A is still in negotiation, so that hasn't been finalized.
I thought, I was, I talked to builders, right? Maybe residential's different. But they said in order to even start up a process, they usually have to pay the tax fee upfront. So are we doing this in a different order than normal or is it different for business? Because they're all residents. They're all condos, just like anybody else.
Not the commercial property.
The condos are residential.
The development is commercial.
Also, if you put a little business underneath.
It makes you a smaller commercial property.
So then if you're doing commercial, not residential.
I'm going to let Ryan hold that. We can do it. There is an M O A, um, being negotiated on that property. Uh, I will let Natasha speak to that further if you'd like to. We have, um, in my personal experience through this property, I know that we are treating the residential units, even though it is mixed use, mixed use. We are treating those as residential units. So I will let Natasha and Paul speak to that first.
So with the mixed use, um, as to your question, uh, what I am aware regarding that property is that there is an open M O A that is still in negotiation. And so aside from what Diane had said, uh, whatever the process that was at the onset of the beginning of the development, that has been complied with. And so just for the purposes of tonight's discussion, well, we were prepared to present to you with just that nothing had been finalized in terms of how many sewers and what fees were paid as it related to the open negotiations of the M O A.
Okay, but I, I'm going to answer this, but if not in the future, can the public be assured at least that all nine units, eight or nine units will have separate water sewer bills monthly? You mean, is that safe assumption?
Uh, that is something that we can, uh, revisit after the M O A is finalized and we can provide you with the, the response.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank Mr. Williams for getting this on the agenda. But I'd like to clarify that I would guarantee you that everybody on this council has been talking and listening about this issue with many people in town. It wasn't just brought up by them, but, uh, I do appreciate them getting it on the agenda. My biggest concern with the availability fees, and I understand the fund that's going to be established with that, but I feel like it's a fee that people are gambling on that especially in areas where water and sewer lines are in place on the streets. And, you know, they want to build a house there on a vacant lot that's never been built on the board, so the connection doesn't exist. That before they even, uh, can start the process by the lot, they need to know the water sewer is there. So I don't quite understand why a developer, a builder would pay five thousand dollars or the seller of the lot would pay five thousand dollars to have somebody tell them, yes, it's there or no, it's not there. It seems like a high cost before anything happens that's excessive. And I'm just talking about residential at this point because we have very few pieces of property that are vacant lots for. of property that are vacant lots for commercial where this is a leading issue, but there are hundreds of residential lots there. I understand the need for availability fee, but I would rather see that availability fee be lower and then the water tap and sewer tap fee be higher to cover that extra cost for the process. I like Mr. Allison's idea, some sort of rebate, but I'm still concerned that, that that upfront fee, when you might turn around and tell them, no, there's nothing there, and they put five thousand dollars to find out they can't go there because there's no water sewer there. So those are my major concerns.
A couple of quick questions of Ms. Byer. During the VNL meeting retreat that we all went through to begin the year, was your staff not tasked with creating additional revenue streams so we wouldn't have the rate tax?
I believe all town staff was tasked that by, by council, yes, sir.
Okay, and the reason I bring this up is I don't want Diana to be in bad light, okay? We voted with this. Now, if there are changes, we don't want to be a business killer here. And if there were mistakes that were made, we certainly open to one. But I think it's important to remember that we have that five million dollars worth of funds that we got, the COVID funds, that's taking care of a very small piece of our town, infrastructure of the town. We have a lot more stuff just like that. So there's a sweet spot between being able to attract businesses to town and giving things away. Mr. Allison had an interesting concept. I would like to add, and it's buyer, and it's kind of putting you on the spot, your conception, okay? If, and I, I like Dr. Solzhenko's idea, if we were able to lower the availability fee so that we're recouping our costs, because that's really the problem. We've been kind of losing our shirts when we've been doing availability fees up to town. If there is a way that we can lessen that amount with the realization that we still need to collect fees, and yes, for smaller businesses, they can go to the town manager and negotiate lower fees. I think what's happening is we're kind of getting caught in the tower battle with them, okay? And not always taking advantage of what's there for us. So long-winded way of asking you, is there a sweet spot when the accessibility fees that we might be able to recoup, assuming that there are water and sewer?
I will respond to that by saying that I can't assume what that sweet spot is right now.
Right.
Because we are still assessing. And I will use the word decrepit because that's what we've got in certain areas of town.
Right.
The decrepitness of the infrastructure. I have a little bit of a concern with swapping the size of the availability fee and adding it to the, to the tap fee. Again, the availability fee, the tap fees already pay for something different. They pay for actual materials, they pay for actual equipment, they pay for actual staff time. The availability, or the tap fees are basically where they need to be right now to cover those costs for my staff. The availability fee, again, I'll reiterate, is there for a lot more than just my staff going out to assess what's there. It's to assess the, the new development's effect on the current infrastructure and what that may cause over time. It's an unknown delta.
But is an answer that we can get that's helpful?
Of the two options, if those are the two options that council chooses to consider, I would say that I prefer Mr. Allison's option, but I am not comfortable with forty percent.
Okay, okay. So what we, it sounds like what we need to do is put together some numbers, and then we also need to have communication with EDC and with the business community and make sure that we all understand what is available to us and take advantage of that. No one here wants to kill business, yes, ma'am?
I also would like to remind council that when this was presented back in February, March, when it was, there was a slide presented to you that showed, I've heard several people say that tonight, that no one else charges this. That is simply untrue. I presented a slide to you all for three months running that showed the fees of the locality surrounding us. Some are a lot larger, they were shown for loud factor, some are very close to plenty of beach and size. The fees that we presented were in no way, shape, or form outlying from other counties our size are charging. I just wanted to put that out there.
But, but trying to avoid making perfect the enemy of the good, right? Yes, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Byer, could you tell us what the average tap cost? I mean, we asked a while back and we really never got any real figures that I can remember.
You did get a figure. It was in the original presentation, and I don't have that, I apologize, I don't have that slide in front of me, but I can put that out there. Again, I can put that slide out there.
So you were able to give us examples of actual tap or availability?
I think that right next.
Availability.
Tap or availability?
It simply costs the town to go out to a residential, a typical residential lot, which should be some kind of lines or something, and they have to say it's available.
Again, the availability fee pays for a lot more than just going out and saying the lines are there and they're adequate and so forth. That availability fee is paying for the stress and the, and the infrastructure stress that new development added to that infrastructure is going to cause. So you're, you're creating a plot of sorts that, just like this blowout up here at Chamberlain and Marshall. I'm going to need thirty, forty, fifty thousand to fix that. I don't have that. So if we had an availability fee that was adequate and we could be putting that into a fund, I could maybe tap that, that, I'm unintended, I could tap that cap and pay for things that come up like this, and they're going to be more frequent as you develop one more. So I do want to make it clear again that the availability fee pays for more than just my people to go out and do the assessment.
And could you, if you had a guess, maybe you know, what percentage of people that come into availability don't end up actually developing a lot of paying for the talent?
There were, there were times, and I will just give you an example. There have been times since I have been director in the past year where we have had realtors give us a stack of forty lots for them. There's no availability fee. They want to respond to all forty lots. That is an incredible drain on my staff. And then when we give them the, I mean, we have to respond. We give them the responses, I've never heard back from one.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Byer, with all due respect, I think that, that all that extra stuff that is going to be covered with the availability fee should be in the actual tap fee if those people do put added stress on the system, not for simply finding out whether or not it's available. I feel like that's a misplacement of the fees for the fund that you're describing, and that's my personal opinion.
I have another, kind of that, like we've been talking to developers about this. I haven't, I haven't seen a lot of respect other than this one Marshall piece of it on the total amount, to be honest with you. A lot of developers, a lot of builders, um, realize there's a cost utility construction, realize that is one, and realize that the town was well behind in its redevelopment. But I think to echo Dr. Solzhenko's point, it's the risk factor that they're taking with not knowing if the answer would be no. Like if the answer to the availability question is yes, there doesn't seem to be a lot of expectations to get anywhere. But when the answer is no, what happens?
When the answer is no, right now, we have no fee. So when the answer is no, it's not. I am not, and I'm going to put Adam on the spot here for a sec. I am not aware that we've charged one availability fee today.
You've not charged one.
So all of this, all of these comments tonight are quite interesting to me because we have not charged the first fee yet.
Yeah, I think it's a case about it.
If, if the answer is no, right now, the answer is no. I mean, there is, there is a place in the code that states that if you have a lot that does not have access to town utilities, you are able to use and approve stuff there and well. If there is, yes, ma'am, it is in there. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So are you saying that if, if they pay, they have to pay this five thousand dollars upfront before you tell them no? Is that not correct? The way that the building ordinance is, so you're saying nobody's asked yet, nobody, nobody's, nobody has called after a building permit and built on it and built since we, since we put this in practice?
You not, you not seen one availability fee, no one in connection?
We have done availabilities. We have not charged fees.
Okay, so what I'm saying is we've been doing the availability and not charging fees, yes, yes, ma'am.
But didn't this go into effect until July?
Yes, ma'am.
So why haven't, why haven't we?
Because, because of politics. We're trying to be fair, we're trying to let this play out and see what we can. So again, you know, we're not money growers over here. We're looking out for the town, and we have not charged a fee until we land somewhere.
On that, you can act though, they also not getting any action fees, so no connection fees ever paid since July 11th. So nobody's decided to build.
Do you think that, I think part of that issue though, that, well, I do know that there are some people who said, let's make sure we get in before the July 1st. So we need to see a gap after that because obviously anybody who's ready to build or apply before July 1st.
Yes.
To get in on that gap, you know?
And then how many connection fees paid up, you know?
There's not been a connection fee, it would be right.
No, no, not to be right. No, no, not to be right.
So basically, it has not been implemented yet.
Correct.
So if somebody goes into zoning and goes through the building process and they pay for a pension, they're going to charge the availability fee and new risk.
But they said they're doing, that's like, that's fine. I didn't think, I feel like I'm further confused by it now.
Are, are you going to hear from the super people here's perspective?
Yeah. I apologize, I apologize to your people, there seems to be a lot of chat about that very specific.
It's, it's okay. I just couldn't have, at least I found.
How, are they coming down?
I didn't know how to get the information. Oh, we closed it out? But we did get it on, to tell. Switch, flip straight up, right up. How's that looking? Okay, so I wasn't quite sure how to get the information out, but we did, in fact, make a complete application in August of twenty twenty-two. There was not, no, there was not at that time a provision of town code to have low lending on that park. So we went through a whole series of planning commission meetings, town council meetings, but almost to the end of the year, and it was finally adopted. When it was adopted, the application was so onus that the cost engineering were just just resourcer. So I, I fought with that for a lot of time, and not until the beach terrace application was approved, in my opinion, but not even half those onus requirements. We made a new application and met in the shoot. It was incomplete because we did not have the engineering surveys on the town. So it was basically going home. Once the beach terrace application accepted, it was made clear to me that I could submit an application without the engineer, but the engineer must draw up before it was presented. So we did do that about a week, ten days ago, A to B, and the engineer, the same engineer that is terrace, is working on the survey and hoping to have that in the next couple weeks. I just wanted to be clear that we didn't make the application. It didn't get reviewed because it was paid.
No, that makes a lot more sense. Yeah.
Okay.
And, but I also think that that's a pretty good point that when using this economic incentive for the tap fee, I think that's a very good point that actually you need to make an application before we even raise the tap fee, Mr. Gregory. And I feel like that would be a consideration.
You're, you're right about that. But when we, when we submitted the second application, we had to obtain a water survey to go. And we did that. And Ms. Byer emailed that there are residential, or were residential taps on those properties. But that in order to use the food truck, I would have to pay the commercial taps, no credit for the over residential, but I would have to pay the commercial taps of twenty plus thousand dollars. So that kind of.
So that should go against the town manager's issue.
So that kind of, that kind of had to set back again. And this is not a, not a huge moneymaker thing. I'm going to be spending ten thousand, spending as much as seventy thousand dollars getting that thing out of my money. And only doing that because there's a need, not because it's going to be a moneymaker thing.
I think we're fitting very openly.
Thank you. Yes, you did. Thank you.
Yeah, because this has kind of overlapped into low vending vehicle limits, I just, you know, when, when somebody suggested that we put, that instead of beyond hosting the vendors, that we allow vendors to be put on private property, we had nothing in our ordinance that allowed that. And so when we developed that, I'm, I'm not convinced that it couldn't be a better ordinance, making it easier. But at the same time, we don't want anybody that has commercial property to be able to pull up six vendors on there and sell them their market off. So there has to be a balance there somewhere, and we need to send it back to the planning commission to relook at, and that's something we will decide as a council to.
So we, and then I want to move on from this topic, and we can bring it back over to the next question, but we're getting pretty far behind on meeting.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to say, I agree with Karen, and I suggested kind of something like that a while back. I mean, why not just have a permit for a food truck in a certain location and then found an issue a certain number of years? And then if we decide to go along the next year, we could just say, okay, no, nobody has to throw out thousands and thousands of dollars, you know, just to see if it would even work. But one other thing I was just going to ask is, Mr. Gregory's situation, how much money do you think you have to go out before you even get to the, find out if the town's willing to waive the tap fees? Like if you were, I'm just talking for future business owners, like if somebody wants to start a business, how far down the road do you have to get, how much money do you have to spend before you can find out if they would be willing to lower or waive the tap fees? Does anybody have a?
I mean, I'm very excited.
How much have you spent so far? Because you've gotten no, really, I said, at this point, I have, I have everything on hold. What, what is going, what is going to cost the most is the ambition to do. What, what is gonna, what is gonna cost the most is the end of shopping to provide adequate power for these vendors and to, to, to run water service, prevent community. So at this point, it's thousands of things. Okay. If, if weeks, they said, "You're gonna pay the $80,000 cap." "Be sorry, you'd have to walk away from it and spray it." Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
That's gonna be no doubt. Okay. All right. We will label this and maybe come back to it in the next work session. We can set it and have it start even more discussion. All right. Next is overs. We're actually, is it eight o'clock? I might take a five minute reset. So we need to rest. Okay. All right. Five minute reset. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. But I, this town, there are like very people, but it's okay. We're still working on, working on one that's not... All right. I'll reconvene the meeting at, I don't know, maybe it's eight or six PM. Uh, and pick up where we left off. Uh, personal papers.
Okay, I'll try to make this quick. So stay with me, I'm gonna go first. Great. So originally, we had the, the new toders coming in. There was no, nothing said about people that have current toders that were still usable. What do we do with these? We put in, take an idea that if you have a personal toder, we can come around and assess whether or not it will work on the truck, whether or not it's still usable. We can stencil that or indicate that it is not acceptable. We got up to the week of being ready to do that. And the town attorney at the time said, "You can't do that. People are threatening litigation because we're touching their personal property and we're messing with their personal property." That was important. We backed off of that and then said, "Okay, we will not allow you to use your personal toder. But what we are gonna do is if people have a personal toder and they would like to donate it to the town, public works will take that toder to the shop, assess it, do the same process, stencil it as now a donated town toder and put it that out for you."
At that same rate?
No.
Oh, at any rate?
Yes. As a second toder. That's the synopsis of how we got to where we are. And we have had several donations.
Okay.
Because they liked the toder so much? Because they, I'm sorry. Because they liked the new toders? A lot of folks are saying, "Well, they have to use the new toder." But there, there, a lot of people are complimenting the new toders and saying that they only need one because they're so large. And I believe there's somebody at the table up there that said that, right?
I did, I did.
Yes. I was pleasantly surprised, please see it in the drawing card right there.
Uh, so this was as, because I had some residents come to me and are looking forward to their new toder. Very happy about that. But that, it just seemed personal toder. And then everybody went there, tagging the tax for those. And I didn't know until because I saw the last one in the capital when we worked back then. And then, since then, the, uh, and I guess I didn't want to get held as responsible understanding of this, what that, if you, uh, if you're agreeing to use the town services and just being a host, then we do have your going to tax action. Was, uh, the last...
I would like so, yeah.
You wouldn't think of...
Yeah, I would like so. Somebody agrees to that. I mean, it's theirs to agree to.
Right.
It's just...
And then if you did not want your personal toder tagged, then odds, you know, you wouldn't be participating in this. Not around with it. And if you did want to participate, that's a right that you could tag. So I think there's still an expectation, I mean, everyone, who else is part of it, anybody in the county, that they would be using that personal toder. Still, if they do have to, I know we, there's somebody come around with that.
Uh, on that, on that particular point, I'm not sure it was clear, and there were different understandings that you bring me my new toder. And I put out a toder that you can say, "It's okay, use that too." Then I would be able to have two toders empty for the price of one because one of them was monitoring.
Correct. That was the original agreement. Yes, that was the compromise we were making, but that's supposed to have to...
Okay. So I don't believe that this new toder is awesome. This new toder is so sturdy and it's easy to tilt up and pull. And I know there are probably some people in town that can't do that. But I understand too that, you know, Bill's gonna help people that need the help. And his crew are gonna help people that need the help. But this new toder, literally, I get two 90 size toders with flip tops. And this new toder, I can get all my, all my trucks. I don't need two anymore. I can put it in there. But if, if I wanted to have an extra toder, but when I have a crack beast or whatever, I could have this one tagged and keep it and then put out two toders, right?
Currently, no. Currently, as I said, we were told that, that litigation was being threatened. So we were not to touch personal toders.
But if I give you permission to tag, to tag my toder...
That's something we would probably have to discuss internally and, and revise because we've already put communication out there about the donation program, which could recognize that, that...
Sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, so you're saying that that's no longer possible, even that's what we agreed to earlier?
No, I think, I guess, I don't know when the switch happened off of what council correction was. I felt like when we talked about the toder, there was an understanding at the council level that RPO would be able to get their personal toder tagged now because it's, it's an administrative thing to just work out if they are agreeing to program of it, you know, versus us just going up and tagging their trucks. You have to let it band it in the night. That should just get worked out.
I agree. I agree. My other, my other question is, I have had a lot of residents saying to me, "Oh my gosh, I don't need this huge toder. It's just me," you know? And, and they have, I've been told that they call, because I said, "Oh, we've got smaller tods. Just call and, and let them know you want a smaller toder." And I was told that they call and told, and they were told, "There's a wait for this because we don't have enough of the small tods."
What, what we're doing, and, and we told you all this at the beginning, we were ordering the 96 gown as the initial distribution. We also ordered some 64s. We didn't have the capability of asking people door to door, what size would you like? And I think people may not have realized, like you said, what they were saying is, remember too, when you would have gotten people, you know, "My neighbor has a 96. I said, "Oh, I have a 64. Now I see it's 96. I don't want one of those." So we didn't do that at the beginning. We said, "We're gonna give out all 96s with the money that we were allotted." But we're trying to get everybody the best bang for the buck at the, at the initiation. And then we did order some 64 toders. We do have a list started. At the public works office, we are all working together on that list. And we do have a way to prioritize that, that list as far as disabled, elderly, or do you just want a smaller toder? So we are working on prioritizing that. And once we get all the 96s delivered, we will go back.
Just call and, and let them know you want a smaller toder, and I was told that they call and told, and they were told there's a waiting list because we don't have enough of the small tods.
What, what we're doing, and, and we told you all this at the beginning, we were ordering the ninety-six down as the initial distribution. We also ordered some sixty-fours. We didn't have the capability of asking people door to door what size would you like. And I think people may not have realized, like you said, what they were saying is, remember too, when you would have gotten people, you know, my neighbor has ninety-six, I said, oh, I have sixty-four, now I see it's ninety-six, I don't want those. So we didn't do that at the beginning, we said we're gonna give out all ninety-sixes with the money that we were allotted, when we're trying to get everybody the best bang for the buck at the, at the initiation. And then we did order some sixty-four toders. We do have a list started at the Public Works office, we are all working together on that list. And we do have a way to prioritize that, that list as far as disabled, elderly, or do you just want a smaller toder? So we are working on prioritizing that, and once we get all the ninety-sixes delivered, we will go back to that list and prioritize and pool the ninety-sixes and give sixty-fours where we can.
Okay, and so down the road, if you give away all the sixty-fours, do these residents that don't feel like they need it have to keep their ninety-six, or are we gonna get more sixty-fours?
Once the program is up and running and we start recouping the cost for all of the toders that we purchased, we can, you know, when we have enough money to purchase new toders, we can start purchasing the different size.
Okay. I like this exciting program. Allow them to go to the donation. Yeah, although I still think people should be allowed to say, I'm participating in some way, and get their, you know, valid toder, I think, you know, we had both bought toders, me and Mr. Williams, that are for the program. So I got to know him in my driveway, but I don't mind, like, getting one of mine tagged, and donating the other one, because it is smaller, and if we run out of smaller ones, maybe you could use my smaller one for the, for the outside. Maybe we can kind of help with all our issues.
Okay, I got a question, because you were talking about possibly people using their cans as a second one. Would we voted, from whatever column orders we voted, you get one can for your thirty dollars a quarter, and then you pay fifteen dollars for additional can? Are you saying that?
It's not fifteen, it's seven fifty.
Seven fifty a quarter. So that was twenty-five dollars. Okay, and so if they got, if they used, say they got their can tagged, they would still be paying for two cans, right? Otherwise, everybody would just go out and get a can and say, one second, and come back.
That was the initial, the initial plan was to allow folks who had new toders that were serviceable to use those toders for the lifespan of that toder. So if you had just bought your new toder, I remember you saying that, and your new toder would last, let's just say it lasts four years, you could use that toder as your second after we stenciled it for no fee. Once that toder is no longer serviceable and we take it out of service, if you wanted a second can, you would have to pay the additional fee for your second can. That's how we set it up initially.
Okay, well, that's good to know, but that's no longer the case, correct?
That is no longer the case based on what I was told regarding litigation of touching people's personal property. We were actually going out the morning, we, we, we had crews going out to mark cans, and they were getting so much black in the field that I pulled them in and said, we're gonna reevaluate this.
Okay, so maybe can we, can we figure out a side-up program then, or something where people voluntarily participate?
I would like to speak with Powell about it as far as what kind of release we might need, or, and, I mean, I'm willing to do that if my staff is able to do it, I'd like to talk with my staff as well, because again, as Mr. Williams said, if we put that back on the table now, how many people are gonna run the bar and buy a new can?
Well, I, I should think of, everyone is that way. The one is that when council gave the directive without understanding up here, that is what was told by the public. So when the vertical happens, that they retrieve, but when it doesn't come back to council, then I feel like we have to honor our word to public that this is the program we agreed on, and they're counting on it. Yeah, there are residents that are counting on this. If there are residents who don't want their can back, that's perfectly fine, but there are all residents who are counting on it and are, you know, expecting that's part of the process. So when it didn't come back to council, then I didn't know there was this direction and then that, I think, here. So as long as there is a way for the, that program still have a function to it, and even sort of, I think this capacity program is even better, because I do think that a lot of people are gonna say, here's my very usable can, and I don't need it anymore, you know? So that's something that I will think about, I think, if I get Ranger out, I think I'll do it. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that there could be, that, you know, you get with Powell, and you administratively find a way for people to voluntarily submit their checking. And this is for a set amount of time, this is just this transition period, it's so short. A few people may go out and buy a hundred and twenty dollar trash can to save themselves seven dollars and fifty cents quarterly. But realistically, probably not a lot of people. Okay. Okay, here you go. Uh, I think I've got that. There'll be some more here tonight. Welcome to the meeting. So I'll start that off, and then both of you, that I can hear in the chime in. So the town center, H VAC system, and the H VAC. So we received three quotes for the H VAC, and we are, we've been going with the lowest response, the response, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars from Roby Quality Electric. The other two quotes we received from Ice Heating and Cooling, thirty thousand, five hundred twenty dollars, and our campaign, thirty thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars. Now, because the lowest quote came in under thirty dollars, it's not going to be presented to you for consideration. We'll just go ahead and enter that requisition to begin the work. The H VAC system has to occur before the roof work needs to be done. And so the quote that we received for it is from Forest Roofing and Construction, and that came in at thirty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. But that vendor did tell us that once he goes on the roof, depending on what he finds up there, that may increase the price if there's an issue or if it needs to be done, once he just really takes a good look at that. We asked for two more quotes from two other vendors who are not responsible, who didn't receive anything from that. And so after the H VAC one is completed, we will then proceed with the roof quote. Now, that's what he brought before you on the September twentieth agenda for approval. And I think there was some additional discussion, whether about just the key for the library, as well as the back door as well. So the door that leads to the hallway to the bathroom, the library door, for them, they need a key to be able to bump off and have access for another way to exit their building, their apartment building. We currently have no keys to that door, so we just need to replace the door lock. So that should be. The back door is aligned, and that property is gonna need like a whole new, well, I'm not sure, but I am likely to have more information on that part.
We've been working on that actually yesterday and today, I think we've got it.
I think so, because that was stuck where it wouldn't open, you had to like get it from the inside and like basically work towards the door. And then we couldn't shut it, it was hard. And then Robin was up and Sally met with Mr. He, I think it's his name, Joe He, Joe He. And we went through the sound system, and we made me, I figured something out. And they were just gonna need some cleaning, Sally said that she's gonna help me, and we're gonna go through and clean all the connections and replace the lights, and he's wanting to give me a quote to replace the lights that were my back. And I've also made a connection with another gentleman that I'm not working at my other home. And he was sound and light at the Patriot Center, so he is more than happy to come in and help for ELOP when I'm running a health and assistance for the sound system. I just wanna give a little bit of a thank you and shout out to Joe President He, who is a former faculty member, also a former police chief in town, has been running a DJ service for, though, my entire life. I don't know if he didn't love DJ. And he is the original installer of the soundboard at Town Center. So he reached out to me and said, I installed that, you want me to come take a look at it? And so over there, he walked us through and we fed along into the soundboard, and we found a mic that was creating an enormous kind of interference from other things. I don't know if it totally dissolved the mic problem, but it certainly did it a lot better. So hopefully with a couple of new mics, you can have a better audio situation over there. That soundboard was a very expensive soundboard, it's not cheap equipment, and it's, hopefully, it's still serviceable, but Joe certainly felt like it could be, and that was a mic issue. And the microphone, he replaced the entire system. But, yeah, Steve is asking to help him come over and cook it. And I think he'll be back, don't you think, kind of? I'm sorry, do you think he'll be back, that wasn't good?
Yes.
He was very long, I cut off him. But we did find one of the channels had basically an empty line on it, so we unplugged that and I got rid of a lot of the feedback.
I thought this was the council's attention back in, when I first got my house, well, back in December twenty twenty-one. Do we have, I'd like to get at least a time frame on this, and the reassurance that this doesn't fix the problem, that we can address it once and for all. I mean, I feel bad for the citizens, I feel bad for myself when I go back and listen to some of those meetings, and I can't hear what the heck's going on. It's very frustrating, and so I just want reassurance that we will address this once and for all.
Do we have a timeframe on when we're getting back to the council?
I have two questions.
Sure, go ahead.
First question regarding the H VAC bid that you are recommending. I'm assuming that the only, not the only reason you're recommending it is because it's under thirty thousand dollars, but that this company had good references and a good reputation based on other criteria. I'm not sure what those criteria are, but I would hate to, I hate to see us take that lowest bid just because it's under thirty thousand dollars and then do a crappy job. My second question is, has to do with just getting that to us at some point in time, checking with the people that were supposed to give us a plan and an estimate for new town hall, because it's been a while on that, and this is all kind of connected in the big picture.
I will speak to you first about your concern, and I will tell you that both, both vendors that we're recommending are quality vendors. Quality Electric has done other jobs for us, including the H VAC system in the current town hall. They do very good work, they're local, and I'm glad they came and know because they live in my preferred company based on quality. And Burris agrees the same way. He has done other issues, other things for us, and I'll assume she can still hear me. They have done other things for us in the town and have done quality work in a timely manner, and the quotes are usually great.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have an ETA, or not yet? We get the roof towed, and then do we have an ETA and how long we're here?
Once, the roof vendor has been waiting to, until you approve this, as soon as you approve the. Well, we haven't been at the H VAC first. Right, right, but as soon as you approve the roof vendor, I can get it on the schedule, that's where I was gonna go with that. So we can coordinate the roof vendor, the H VAC vendor, once we do that, and certainly give you a more, you know, more of an ETA.
Am I?
I'm hoping not, no, 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 I'm hoping, maybe two months at most. But I'm speaking out of turn because I, it's been a while since we've acquired these, and I'm not sure either vendor is right now on the materials or scheduling.
I think they want to coordinate together.
So the reason we have to do the H VAC first is because it has to go in through the roof?
No, I get it.
When is the AC done, you thought?
Hopefully, as soon as I can get the requisition done, and we can call and get it, get it scheduled. I'm hoping in a couple of weeks, I'm hoping if he has all the materials he needs. He had located the last I talked to him, he had located a unit that would work, so I'm hoping it'll be a couple of weeks once we give him the go-ahead. Right, when it gets going.
I heard that, yeah.
How much was this?
Thirty?
And I feel like at this point, we rely completely on staff, not, they're not competent, but that we, really as a council, I feel like we should address their big issues. Um, and I'll give an example, um, you may not agree with me, but during our technical improvement meeting, um, Diane brought up a number of things to council that need to be addressed, which I think is great. Um, but the issue I have with that is that it was so many things. Uh, this comes back, this needs to be replaced, we need to look at this, oh, the drainage system doesn't work, and we really need it, uh, this happened, and so it was like all these things, and it was just blew by us all. The drainage system, now fast forward a few months, this was in April, I think, fast forward a few months, and then we had a one point one four million gallon spill of sewage into our, um, creek. And I feel like that's just one thing I hope, that if we had discussed some of these things in great detail, you know, maybe asked, had some time to ask Diane more questions, you know, when she's saying we need this, this and this, as a council or as a committee, we could say, okay, well, Diane, back up a minute, tell us a little bit more about the drainage system. You're saying it doesn't work, and we definitely need it. Um, can we find some money to replace it now instead of per request in twenty twenty-five? And then somebody in the committee could say, well, you know, we, we need definitely look, you know, to staff for direction, but we did just get that West Horn County settlement money, why not use that now instead of twenty twenty-five budget? I mean, just, just these things, and maybe we couldn't avoid this, so, but I feel like there's definitely a possibility. But that's just one small example, I mean, the, the, kind of allows residents keep raising concerns about sidewalks and front lanes and other things. And as a committee, we can take more time. I'm nothing against Mr. Wood, I mean, he's doing a wonderful job with his liaison role, but it's a lot more than just one person can. You know, maybe the economic development committee or planning commission or one of those things, maybe one person as liaison can handle that. Um, but I think it's, my personal opinion, we need to take a deeper dive into committee, uh, for public works and for infrastructure. And the reason why I'm proposing infrastructure slash public works is because it's hard to separate those two. I'm not proposing that we might go manage or even get involved in any kind of staffing or anything, but we could ask, where, you know, we can go dive into the needs of, of the works, um, because obviously they need the equipment, the tools and the resources to handle our infrastructure and address our infrastructure needs, so we would, we, we would need to kind of keep them paired up. And so that's what I'm proposing, I sent council, and I'm sure everybody had the chance to read the email that I sent council information on committees, they're, they're very common, as Tom said prior to this, um, a lot of towns have them. Um, they're, they're actually way more common than, um, liaison roles. So it's, it's definitely something we can do, and I, I'm hoping the council will at least enter thinking, give it a shot. Uh, so that's my suggestion.
Okay, uh, I follow this by a curve.
So, uh, Mr. Williams, um, I have a few questions. Who do you see serving on these committees? How would they be appointed? How many more hours out of a week or a month would, could this require commitment from staff and council members and, and then anybody else that you want on a committee? And what would be the goal of the committee? I mean, you want the committee to do what? Do you have some ideas as to what you would like the committee to address?
Those are questions we might say someone again, but as far as the members of the committee, uh, that's up to us to decide at the council, if we decide
One has to do because it's dragging, who needs to?
Um, I see that we need six couple of members with council. Um, it doesn't have to be four, it could be, I mean, there's, there's always, there's, there's multiple base of law committee. Um, I believe it was, um, probably you can let me know, I can't remember if, is it, if two, if even as two, it has to be publicly announced, right? We got was two. I believe so, if it's even two, I guess designated committee, designated members, district, uh, committee. I was going to say, have a four-year requirement.
My opinion is if, if the council forms any committee, whether council members are on it or not, it is has to meet certain criteria for comment here, and that's part of why the EDC was born under the chief of commerce, and it's not a council committee. Because, uh, we were, maybe we were not considered adding that whole burden to, uh, that, that.
No, are they? So the, um,
Well, yeah, but they won't
Historically, I know, um, Mayor Bond gathered these, uh, the committees, or I believe that's what I've heard anyway, and Mayor should continue to that. Um, but prior to that, I want to hear committees, or at least an example, have three members plus a chair. Um, they were all the way up with council members, I'm not suggesting this is the way to go, this is one example. And they would, uh, bring, I guess the whole point would be you have four members who could agree on something, you could bring it to council, and it would be a lot easier to get it passed. Um, but that's just one example, but, I mean, we could have as little as two. Uh, we could even have, um, the public works liaison, take that role instead of being a liaison, actually be the chair of the public works room, uh, for example. So I, I don't have any suggestions of who has to be on it, I mean, I'd be willing to be on it, um, I'm sure maybe one or two other council members might be willing to be on it, I mean, they thought that they would be doing good for the community. Um, I guess in the old days, the mayor was always on the committees, but that's not necessarily the requirement. Um, so that was, they, that's kind of where I'm thinking there. Um, who would, you had other questions here, or I forgot, I hit like five.
Yeah, so what's the goal of this committee? I mean, I have one on once with the town manager, she enables me to speak with her staff about specific issues when I have issues that are brought up. Um, we bring those to the council, I mean, what is, what is the goal of needing? Again, in the public, I, I'm not sure I see the need for it.
Uh, the goal is, I, I thought I explained it very well in the beginning, but the goal is to address our citizens' concerns. Um, specifically with infrastructure and then the relation with public works, um, and fulfilling our needs. I feel like, I mean, Tom brought this up prior about committees, because we kind of founder around sometimes in these council meetings, um, you know, on topics, because we just don't have enough time, I mean, look at, you know, look, we have like seven, eight things on agenda tonight, and, you know, we're five, we're out watching more problems before we, you know, finish, I mean, it's, it's just a lot, and sometimes we just don't really accomplish. And so a public works committee can say, address one thing at a time, or, you know, most of those, but they would have an agenda. It wouldn't even necessarily require staff to be there, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't ask staff to, um, answer questions during business hours, which really wouldn't take much more of a time, because they're going to address our, our infrastructure needs anyway, so if we wanted to address, say, the drainage system or something like that, and if you weren't that, uh, what the need was, um, you know, if we wanted to make it as immediate need or recommend that to the council, you know, immediate need versus twenty twenty-five need. Uh, sidewalks, I mean, we've been talking about sidewalks since I've been at council, and we're in the process of doing a survey, but, uh, you know, maybe we could get a little more of that, the map or the drainage, uh, I just, I, my vision of this is that we would really just address public works needs and the community needs in this town as a council and as a, as a committee, and we make recommendations to council, and the council can say yes or no. Vote it.
Yeah, another question?
I know, I have time, I don't, I don't
I think the purpose is preventive, flatter, I like that analogy. Uh, the idea that we can avoid these extended conversations we've had, the seeming is a good challenge. Get questions answered before, before they get here, get people on one who could, who could craft answers and solutions. They were not sitting here for hours discussing what should we take care of.
Yeah, I think, um, uh, I, I mean, I'm listening and I'm hearing here, I'm hearing the concern, I need to verify that infrastructure, but I don't mind to undermine that, that we all indeed are passionate about infrastructure. And then I, I see a part of the rest of the committees struggling. I think that struggle, um, for multitude of reasons. Yeah, that's really
Yeah, um, and by the way, thank you for providing, uh, thoughts and email, and I, I'd like to address them. Um, as, uh, Mr. Williams had mentioned, this has been voted on before and then voted down, and I suspect the reason they were voted down for a multitude of reasons. First of all, we heard from people who are part of the town. The Economic Development Committee, Jill Kelly, said that we needed another committee, not the whole of that. Michael Williams, uh, I'm sorry, um, William, yeah, forget it. Uh, he had the Economic Development Committee, and pardon me, I'm getting tired. Uh, he had mentioned that he is a guest committee. So those are two chairs of the Economic Development Committee. The former attorney of Vivian Sage Iowa, uh, is also a guest, saying that she's seen it in other municipalities, and it simply doesn't work. Here is how our jobs are supposed to work. And just as you heard earlier tonight, there was someone who said that she had a problem. She contacted me and she was constituent. I heard her problem, and I did what almost all of us do, we go to town management and we speak about the problem. And then once that is done, they task, because the individual department has worked with them, they task people to get those things done. So if there is a problem with a particular piece of infrastructure, then it's up to us to find out what is issue. So I don't see any situation where we are going to get rid of our ability to go to town management and find out answers and relinquish that to two, three or four other people. Uh, that just doesn't, doesn't work, and I have a fear of letting some people think that it doesn't work. Council is privy to the same information that the council, that the, um, committee would be privy to. So all you're doing is simply diluting the council's authority. Um, the public works meeting without public works, that suggestion? I don't even know how that works. Uh, Miss Byer, would you want to be part of the discussion where you weren't allowed to be part of the discussion? So I just think that when we take a look at it at a whole, that we realize that it's up to us to take care of those particular issues. All of us can talk to any department, I've been to EDC and spoken to them. Dr. South Sullivan has gone to other departments to which she's not the liaison, but she's helped them. The mayor has gone to all other departments and spoken with them. So all we're ultimately going to do is let it down the timeframe, and their beliefs, uh, are really not that high. As a matter of fact, when asked for some examples from, uh, the Virginia municipal league of these sorts of committees, they simply aren't that high. So my recommendation would be to vote them.
All right, you're not here, I got it.
I have a stage role suggestion, and that is that we, we continue this night after the next meeting for the purpose of Dan presenting a formal resolution on a committee, its purpose and its membership, that we can sort something out.
I think you are, DMO is coming up and I'm hoping, are you going to DMO?
Yeah.
David, there's, uh, the Virginia municipal league training, there are, um, I was looking at other, uh, towns that have committees there at the DMO and met their members and talked about what they want with them. I think that when we get to a point where we have some sort of resolution about this, that, um, hopefully you can attend that training and you can talk to some other leaders that have been on this and see how they come up, okay?
So what do you want to play about?
Uh, we'll circle back to it, just talk from the other thing, um, because, I mean, we have a lot of things between the two of us.
I, I just, I know, I, I think, I just have to address one point that was made, and that is that these meetings are too long. The one, the one thing that we owe the public is an open discussion about the issues and our positions as to why we're voting. We owe that to the people that elected us, and for them to have to go to another meeting to hear a smaller group of council people discuss it is just another added burden and dilutes their transparency. By having longer discussions at the walk session, then that increases their transparency, as constituents know they can come to meetings a lot and hear everything that we're talking about.
All right, so I guess, now we're kind of people, and we do have one thing to get to, and we're now on hour five.
Okay, I do want to address one thing that Mr. Wood said that, that's a concern I did bring up with the assistant town manager. Um, I was a little bit concerned when I heard of all the, um, efforts that were being taken by the town on Jackson Street. I mean, I think that lady that came in tonight is really appreciative, but I obviously didn't realize that one council member had that, that amount of authority to, um, direct the town manager or suggest the town manager that all those resources be expended without the rest of the council even knowing about um, or, or having to say. So I, I'm a little bit concerned, you know, yeah, we can bring issues to the town manager, but we, we can't, I, to me, I don't think we can cause that level of activity. So I'm a little bit concerned that, that, I mean, I think a committee would at least bring the discussion out in public instead of private with one person talking.
It was in public, it was some of the neighborhood watch program, which everybody on council is invited to attend at the police department months, and that's where a lot of these issues surface, and anybody on the road that cares about public safety should come to the neighborhood watch program meetings. I mean, only once every couple of months.
I have a lot of ideas about the subject matter, and I hope that any public safety measure that is brought the town manager, the town manager is brought in to the police chief and taken care of, re-act on. I don't care if one town member brings it up with full faculty, if they try to still allow them to fully keep, you know, what these stupid jobs, re-act on and have the mission. We should do that, I mean, we're looking at it, to do that.
Can, can we show a formal, uh, paper as well?
I think it's pretty
I don't, I don't need consensus to take it up, huh?
What?
I don't need consensus to take it up.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, be, for this to be back to
All right.
For, for formal
There's a motion to bring
Let's go to the end.
Okay.
I just want to bring it to the end. I'd make a motion if we voted on it now.
All right, well, stop, we're not doing this. There's a motion on the table, bring it to the next meeting, is there a second to that?
I said it.
All right, let's move on. Mr. Wood?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood?
Uh.
Mr. Rock? Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
All right, there it goes. Next item, hour five now, uh, maybe four. All right, soundboard order, section twenty-sixty-nine, that is making it as a currently totally disabled. Mr. Rock?
This is a follow-up to the last meeting, where we addressed one of the sewer rates and the, the criteria, we did a very lovely couple. And the questions raised, and it's, sure we do the same thing with the old state taxes, because it's all the same application, just to be consistent. So what this does, do the second, who looks at this?
We need to ask parties for volunteering, or do we, uh, do we bring them to vote at the next meeting?
I think we're, we're voting this.
Okay, I think we've been typically with all town vote changes, allowing public input at that time period, we would still then only attend the
Last, last time we did, yes. Last, last time we did go to some advertising, over, like, you, when I had advertising.
Yep, what's the paper?
So sorry about that.
Advertising, and putting them away, playing. A little bottom of the public end, uh, what is the legal reply or what?
Right.
Are there questions on this? Before I go?
I, I'm not going on. Mr. Long's question could be answered as to whether or not this new way of calculating the way will, will actually increase the amount of taxes that some people had to pay because of.
So it does, yeah. Because when I think Heather, when we were looking at the program originally, if you change the $600 to a percentage, it does actually increase the.
So then we can consider $600 or 30% which is more, uh, that's possible.
It's possible.
Yeah.
But I didn't grow up sad because, you know, it's, it's one issue.
You want to see if we bring that up next, is that possible? Is it possible? I'm looking at Heather, so this one after that, yeah, see my office now, right? I don't, you know, I don't believe she's got her heart back over there, she's been in the last. She's got kind of a big.
Before I take my blood, yeah, off of my heart, I'm going to change my name.
Already made a budget. So you want to leave it, I think it wants to leave it there. I think it's all. Um, what do you mean, well, that can give you the numbers in front of the meeting?
I just, I don't know what the numbers.
Okay.
Yeah. It's like, oh, I've got many people.
Yeah, but you're getting, uh, thirty something, uh, thirty, thirty one people there. And most of those people are assessed that under two hundred dollars amount of.
Most of them are. I don't, I don't know that.
Yeah, well, you can teach them to do it.
I do.
That makes sense. Um, okay, is there anything else for that? As the PDW, I've been looking at Heather, I guess I should have been looking at.
Are you looking for, uh, new assessments or, uh, last year's assessments?
Oh, cool. I mean, this might not unfold before. This is a personal property, this is real estate.
I'm just saying, I've lost this real estate. I haven't done this, I haven't done a 2023 bill yet.
Uh, yeah, no, I think we can go up the last year's.
That's.
I understand.
Because I have that.
Is that helpful for anything else?
Yeah, that's why I have to find it.
Okay. All right. Ending our, uh, okay. I don't think I have a question for the meeting, please, just hold on. All right, to the short-term rental ordinance.
Manager.
Yeah?
Manager moves cannot swap, moves suffer. Um, you have a reminder this evening, uh, the short-term rental ordinance. This also scheduled a public hearing for your September twenty meeting. Um, you have a memorandum that staff prepared that talks about the details, you know, of the proposal. But just wanted to reiterate to you that, you know, you sent this to planning commission in April, asking them to work with, um, a subcommittee to come up with responses to the draft ordinance that staff had presented to you relative to short-term rentals. This is proposed as amendment to zoning ordinance, chapter or section eighteen for miscellaneous items in the ordinance. The planning commission, um, appointed the subcommittee. The subcommittee met, um, between April and June. And then the subcommittee's recommendations on staff's ordinance was presented to the planning commission. The planning commission held a public hearing in July. They, um, also scheduled a special work session, especially for the short-term rental ordinance after the public input. They are recommending approval of this ordinance too. In the packet, I wanted to bring out to you that you have two attachments. The first attachment in the packet is the clean version of the ordinance. It does incorporate two changes that staff is recommending to it. It's really for clarification. Um, and in one item that's not in here, but we will add that the, um, town attorney involves. And that is relative to on page two of the clean version of the ordinance in item eight. Where the, the language, uh, in that item says any short-term rental in violations of any regulations, including operation without a short-term rental permit, is subject to all of the penalties as set for by the town. That's a, the attorney might notice to clarify that town, by the town lawyer. And so what we're changing that language to say is it's fraction, not ten on, and say this ordinance. The other changes are in the here for you to look at. And I would ask you also, as you're reviewing the ordinance, to look at the, uh, second attachment. And the second attachment includes for you, um, the planning commission's changes to the original staff draft. Things that were added are shown there in blue font. It also includes for you the input that staff received from the short-term rental committee. So all of that information was given to the planning commission and this is their recommendation too. So, um, we'd like to answer any specific questions you have tonight, if you do. And also to let you know that you'll have the public hearing on the twentieth. If you have any, um, something with this version of the ordinance. And then also I want you to, if you will, between now and the twentieth, think about, uh, staff has been talking about what will the permit fee be for a short-term rental, a rental unit. And the item, the number that's been tossed around has been $50. Um, that's what we talked about, you know, with the committee. That's what many other local counties charge for this type of permit. So that's where the $50 change comes. And so we want you to think about that because we will need to add a fee to the schedule for this permit. And, um, that would have to be advertised separately or changed to your fees and a public hearing would be held on that. So if you would come back next month or, you know, if you want to send something to us, that's fine, what your thoughts are, or that fee will be appropriate, staff have recommended that that will be $50. Um, and like I said, we answer any questions you have on the ordinance now. Um, it is designed based on state code to do two things. Um, right now, and then this is my inclination from the last report that, um, the United Department received from some other rental injuries. And I think it's to that report now, um, there were approximately 130, just over 130, um, short-term rentals in the tanks. So one of the purposes of the state code allows you as a local tenant to, um, you know, to help with identifying short-term rentals that are in the community as well as establishing use regulations to help mitigate any impacts of these. Um, it allows you to require permit to get the information, the location for the short-term rental. And it also allows you through zoning ordinance to adopt regulations for it. Because as you know, short-term rentals mostly, um, are located in single-family residential districts. If you want to answer any questions.
I, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, uh, address a one point and that was the concern about allowing short-term rental occupants to park on public street. And this was hotly debated and discussed with input from, I believe, the police and, um, the lawyer, that if a, if a beach killer can come in here and park off the street, if it's legal parking and walk down to the beach, then we can't prevent the occupant of a short-term rental from doing the same. We can't encourage our short-term rental owners to settle a permit that they're, you know, they're guests of property or designated areas, but as a T O, we can't discriminate against a beach killer just because they're rental property in town.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah, and part, uh, like Karen said, part of this is probably, uh, debate. Um, I was doing my, took a walk on the weekend and I walked by the, the new short-term rental there by the Ravens Point. Um, and I saw three cars kind of crammed in there and one parked out in front of the yard just to make four cars fit. Um, and so my concern is, so if we, for example, we required them to list a parking and they say they list three slots and they got four or five cars, is there any kind of tip to the requirement for parking? Or, you know, because I mean, that could be definitely disruptive to the neighborhood if you got five cars parked in the yard in a little place. So is there any tip for that?
We would ask them to identify cars on the permit with the parking units. Um, we would have the ability and, and we, one of the things is that a parking space wouldn't be in the front yard. It would be in a parking area. And so we would evaluate that based on the occupancy that they're proposing for the unit. Those were, that information would be able to permit as well. And then we would have the ability to go out and see, you know, what that parking is and if they have enough room for that.
I think the biggest point is what is the, um, penalty if you don't keep your property up or don't follow the ordinance? Like, what's the fee?
Oh, excuse me. So if we go by now that someone's not following the ordinance and it's missing, you would, um, issue a notice of violation to them and then advise them that, you know, here's what we discovered and they're not parking the way they should be or probably identified on the permit. And then the ordinance would allow, so we would give them the opportunity to correct that. Um, if they're continuing, there's two or more substantial complaints within a six-month period, then the town would have the ability through the zoning administrator, community development director, to talk about, um, suspending or even suspending the, uh, permit.
Oh, okay. So the beach is suspended under the permit?
Yes, and it could involve, it could involve fines as well. But that would ultimately, um, come to council.
Okay, um, another question, um, the fee, um, so definitely not for, you know, gouging factors and all that, but $50 to me seems like it might be a little low considering the extra staff time is going to be required to follow up on complaints and issues of, where did the $50 come from?
It is an example that has been used in other localities. Um, so, I mean, and then we didn't evaluate, we just evaluated a few, um, but there may be over fees. Uh, it's not anything that's mandated in the state as far as how much that fee can be. Um, the state does set a volume that can be charged, uh, for not registering, which is $500. But, um, so, um.
Okay, so we do have some kind of, that's one, another one of the questions I was going to ask, would somebody operate it illegally? So now you said the, the registration, of course, we're not, we're, we're proposing a permit not a registration. Uh, can we still charge that $500 per the state code?
So the $500 is a fee for violation. Um, we have our own requirements in the, in the zoning ordinance that allow you to find somebody if you need to. And so this ordinance makes reference back to the same remedy that you have in the zoning ordinance for violations. But as far as the permit fee itself, that's something that is not regulated by state code. So it's something that can be established on council.
Okay. And, uh, one of the, uh, concerns that I've got from constituents is just, uh, disruption to their neighborhood. You know, some of them are good neighbors, some are, um, so, but we also know a lot of people just, you know, trying to probably get rid of their B and Bs because they don't like them outside of them. So how, how is the town going to navigate that part of it where, like, I'm complaining, you know, there were a lot of last night and there's not complaining, the trash is outside. I mean, how many of us balance that substantiated complaint?
Well, it's how we do for all, I mean, all of the complaints that we receive. It's something that we don't have to investigate. We don't have to make, you know, to see, we go out, I mean, to see what's going on. If it, if a person is loud and violating the town's noise ordinance, then that should be called to the police department. Um, and then that, we would know that based on the report that goes into the police department. Um, as far as, you know, trashing left out, we would get that complaint, we would spend our property.
And your question is.
All right, you know, um, now, I mean, there, there's a council, I think that when we start this up, I think it's going to be the one for all of us because I would expect that, you know, traditionally, fundamentally somewhere around about 130, uh, SPR zone permits based on, uh, what we believe is out there on, included by, uh, uh, the short-term rental agencies that are in some part. Uh, I expect that we're going to, we're going to do this the first year, um, giving the department, uh, site plans and, uh, and making sure that everything is, everything is considered with the code. And then as they, uh, as they read up every year with a new permit, I expect that that will eventually start to decline over time and it won't be a significant issue. Of course, we'll, we'll have to see what happens with the neighborhood, we play the ice in the sandbox. We don't have those, have the violations. Uh, but I really expect that we will, from time to time, that's something that we'll have to address with the council with, you know, with the council over and over again.
I was going to add just one, uh, I apologize for that. We, we talked about this issue with the, um, committee members, uh, for short-term rental. And, you know, one of the things that is, that's going to help the will, the, um, you know, operations. And I think that, you know, really, I guess I will tell you, that the folks that are not going to be neighboring are going to be fewer than those who are going to be neighboring. But one of the things that the short members on the subcommittee that were short-term rental owners add it is that with this process, not only is the, you know, they're going to be online to make sure that their guests are understanding what the rules are, understanding what the rules are about parking, understand what the rules are about being a good neighbor. Because they are the ones, as the business owners, that will be subject to potentially suspension and loss of income. And, you know, if it's a severe case and multiple continued problems, the, um, permit could be revoked. And also, you know, one of the things that we, that we marked is not only do, um, like, these folks, short-term rental hosts get rated on these systems, so do guests. So guests will get a rating and if they're not good guests, other hosts will know that and they, they have a choice whether they want to return.
I know one of the things that was addressed in the ordinance was occupancy, uh, two people per room plus, plus two. Uh, is any of that, is any of that information there that you foresee or you have experience? Will any of that information be public so that, you know, people will know, like, hey, there's 10 people in the house next door. It's two bedroomed place. That would be a, I would make a complaint or it should be a, somebody proves it's substantiated, um, how?
So the zoning permits are, are public information.
Oh, so they would be.
Very public information. On the zoning area, as I probably will say, this home has three bedrooms in there for the occupancy, maximum limit is eight.
Okay. And the last thing I can think of is trash. Um, that's a big complaint from a lot of them. I know our trash ordinance address, addresses, you can't leave your canal or, you know, one day or whatever. Uh, is there anything in this ordinance that would capitalize the short-term rental owner that's not being one? Because that would seem to be that, that could be a complaint if every week there are trash incidents, not if they're all being logged. Uh, that could be a violation. Uh, that could be a violation.
So, that would be a violation of the trash ordinance?
Right, but would it go back to the short-term rental as a substantiated complaint?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I got this thing, I appreciate all the time you guys have spent on this. I've been to all the meetings pretty much and listened to everything and read and posted them on, so I, I see how much time gone into this and I'm still a little gosh, so I, I think, uh, appreciate everything you guys have done.
All right, moving forward. Uh, is there anything else on the short-term rental order? Nope? Okay. Then, uh, I will go into public speaking. Uh...
My name is Rick.
Yeah, well, I just got to raise the motion. Uh, if there are, if there was a good committee for steering, do not walk into the panel or the panel. Uh, because if there's a 2.23711, and a watch, and a dress related to the performance of capital, and a claim for credit, and a service for the income of 2.23711, and a, and a dress that we can't detect, how would we be regarded by that? Everybody? Someone, I guess I can go there, I, okay, my condition. Let's not be too... All right.